...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Jerry DiTulio.
Here.
Bud Starke.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
And Mr. Pond excused himself for night. He's out of town.
Thank you. Any changes to the minutes of either August 18 or August 25? If not, they stand approved as presented. Let's move on to proclamations and ceremonies. I don't believe we have any tonight. So let's go right on to citizens' right to speak. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak on any matter not on the agenda? And I see the attorney is coming forward. Maximum of three minutes. Oh my gosh, we have several here. Okay, these are for items that are not on the agenda tonight's agenda. Let's start with Larry Welshon.
Is this on? Hi, I'm Genevieve Wooden. I'm the Chair of the Wheat Ridge Committee for Educational Excellence. This is a new committee that we just started this year in Wheat Ridge. One of the exciting things we're doing is helping our local schools promote themselves, let everyone know what they're about, and any special programs they have going on. We have two guests tonight. We have Larry Welshon from Alpine Valley, which is a private school that many of you may not have even known was here in Wheat Ridge. And we also have Griff Worth from Wheat Ridge High School. They're both going to give you a brief presentation on their schools.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Member of Council. I am Larry Welshon. I'm founder of Alpine Valley School. We are an independent K-12 school and have been in Wheat Ridge for 14 of our 18 years. Many years ago, I attended Prospect Valley and Everett Junior High, when it was a junior high, and I am a graduate of Wheat Ridge High School. And although I do live across the border in the great city of Edgewater, Wheat Ridge is definitely in my stomping grounds. So Alpine Valley School appreciates Councilman Wooden's efforts with the Wheat Ridge Committee for Excellence in Education and its invitation to speak to you this evening. One of the goals of the committee is to highlight Wheat Ridge Schools so that local parents become aware of what is right in our own backyards. It is my understanding that the traditional idea of the neighborhood school has changed a great deal since I went out as a kid in school in the 70s and 80s. And whether this is good or bad remains to be seen, but there is definitely a change. And I think what is clear is that all of our local schools have to actively showcase ourselves to the community. Thus, we're pleased to participate in the upcoming Guide to Wheat Ridge Schools, which is a printed guide that will be produced sometime in the very near future, as well as the Wheat Ridge Summit on Education at the REC Center on September 17. So among the many Wheat Ridge Schools is our small K-12 campus at 45th and Parfett. Alpine Valley School follows the Sudbury Model of Education. What is a Sudbury School? Well, it's a lot like any other school. Our students learn to read, write, do math. Our graduates go to college or into the workforce, then into college. We have fire drills and we have lunch. We have bake sales, classes, all the things that you would normally see. But what sets us apart in large measure is the daily immersion in civics for our students. Alpine Valley School operates as a self-governing, scaled-down version of the larger society in which we all live. Students and staff are actively involved in the making and enforcing of all the school rules through a committee of their peers. Managing the budget and the school's facility is also handled democratically through various officials and groups, just like the city of Wheat Ridge. It relies on the city council and planning and zoning commissions and all those other things, too, just to cite a couple of examples. This level of student involvement in the running of the school doesn't necessarily create a bunch of would-be city councilmen and mayors, as you might think, but it does lead to graduates having a stronger sense of personal responsibility and connection to their community. Thank you very much for the time and ability to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
That was Alpine Valley. Now we'll have Griff Worth from Wheat Ridge High School. Right?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for inviting me to come speak. I want to thank you also. I feel like the city council really is behind our Wheat Ridge Farmers 5000, so I appreciate that. And again, as Larry said, we're pretty excited about the work with the city on our summit and the committee that we have doing some work. So Wheat Ridge High School, I guess I'd start with really three things that I'd go with. First thing you need to know about Wheat Ridge is the academics. Very proud, long tradition of history, and much like Larry, what year was that, by the way? 84, he's young. I'm 81. So we have a long, what year? 59. Could anyone beat 59? That's it. You're the winner. But we have that long, proud history of academic success at Wheat Ridge High School. And that still goes on today. And I have some things that I'll leave with you before I go to talk about that. Right now, the state's accountability system really under-measures growth. And that takes where a student was and how much they learn in one year. The median growth percentile is determined in 50 is determined to be one year's growth. In the four years we've had that accountability system in place, every test, every grade of every subject at Wheat Ridge High School, the results come back to over 50, a score that's over 50. In that time, there's only one other high school in Jefferson County that can say that, and that's Ralston Valley High School. So truly pretty elite company when we talk about that. And I guess another indicator that I would be proud of is our Advanced Placement Scores. AP tests, classes are given to students, and they are actually the college equivalent. And students can, in fact, earn college credit through an AP class. We had an Equity and Excellence Score this last year of 33%. What that means is 33% of our students earned college credit while they were still at Wheat Ridge High School. Now, is it the highest in Jeffco? No. But what I would tell you is unique is as time has changed and demographics have changed, Wheat Ridge is now a school that has 50% of our kids that are at risk. They're on the free and reduced lunch program. Those other schools that are higher than us, that have a higher Equity and Excellence Score, are students that are in the 10 to 15% free and reduced lunch category. So for the kids that we get, we're making incredible strides at growth that results in college success at the end of the road. The one story I would share personally, I had a parent who emailed me. Her daughter graduated last year. She's going to Oklahoma this year, and she's got 61 credits going into college. Now, this is a young lady who just earned a four-year scholarship, by the way. She's going into college as a junior. She's going to spend two years getting her undergrad degree, and then two years in law school, all paid for by the work that she did when she was at Wheat Ridge High School. We have other stories like that. I have some other parents that I'm going to ask for their emails as well. So number one would be academics. The second piece of Wheat Ridge High School I'd share with you would be activities and athletics. And that's probably the one that gets the most notoriety. You read about those things in the newspaper. You see the teams that are doing very well. Again, we know the history and tradition, expectations that this community has for activities and athletics. That's the part of education that gives that whole well-rounded citizen. It's not just they can do the work, but it's also they know how to interact with those around them. I've been at Wheat Ridge eight years. Is that green light mean my three minutes are up? It's blinking at me. I'm long, you ask, give a principal a mic, you're in trouble, sorry.
Do you know how hard it's going to be for me to tell you when your time's up?
Yeah, I, well, thank you. I appreciate it. But I would tell you, I've been there for eight years at Wheat Ridge High School. In those eight years, we've won 10 state titles. Now, that's a measure of success, but the real measure of success is that we have about a 52% participation rate for athletics. And it's about another 30% of participation in activities. Huge, huge celebration on that. The third piece then would be the arts. We're always worried in education that the arts are at risk. We continue to have strong arts programs at Wheat Ridge, whether they would be visual arts, performing arts. Really, the visual arts, the last couple of years, I would go on all night, so I'll just say, you need to get in the school and see what we got going, because it's fabulous. And then the last thing I want to mention, one of the things that we've started doing over the last couple of years, we've identified one of the real needs that we have in society today. We have too many people that don't really spend the time on character and values with students, with kids.
You are out of time.
I'm out of time. Anyway, we're working on character with kids as well. Thank you. I appreciate you guys letting me come. I'm going to pass these from Jen on down. Thanks.
Thank you. And one of our council members is a teacher at Wheat Ridge High School, Mr. DiTulio. Okay, let's move on to our other speakers. Mary Fe- Feji? Feji? And then after Mary will be Connie McCoy, if you'll be ready, please.
Good evening, and I just wanted to come and address the issue of the direction I think Wheat Ridge is heading. I'm not real pleased with a couple of things, and I thought, well, let's come here and talk to you about it. But first off, I want to let you know, the 38th Avenue corridor, I am so thrilled with that. Oh my goodness, what a great avenue we have set for our city and for the progress for the future. The businesses, the shops, the restaurants, the, you know, the art, fabulous, absolutely wonderful. But on the other hand, you have the grow pot thing that's going on right now. Not happy with that. And especially when I found out that over there on Miller and 38th, they're planning on doing a grow pot thing right next to Everett Junior High. What are we thinking? The fact that they would pass this type of thing for our city is just unheard of. I cannot believe that we did this. And especially when you look at your neighbors. You look at Arvada, they turned it down. You look at Littleton, they turned it down. And you look at Golden, they did a 50-page report, and they decided to turn it down. What are we thinking? Don't we care about our youth? And especially when we allow those businesses to set up right across from our parks, right by our schools? Come on! We need to correct this mistake. This is not a good thing for our city. And, you know, there are ways to correct this. One is you do not allow any more of these grow pot businesses within our city. This is not a good thing. The second one is limit the size that they can become. You do not let them take over the next shopping, the next one, and the next one, and take over the entire district. Come on! Stop it. Get it downsized. Pretty soon, if they need to grow, they got to move out. And the next one is products. You're allowing them to have candy and cookies and all this stuff with pot in them. Would you allow the same thing for the tobacco industry? No, you would not. But you're allowing it for the pot industry. Come on, we got to think better than this for our city. And lastly, we need to basically make a move to get this out of our city. We do not need this here. And, you know, I believe that Wheat Ridge is a fantastic community. I've lived here for over 30 years. I've raised my children here. They went to Wheat Ridge High School. It is a fantastic city. And I think you have done a fantastic job until I found out about this pot thing. This is just unheard of, and we need to fix this mistake. So I urge you, please, fix this as soon as possible and get us out of this. Thank you.
That was a perfect three minutes. Thank you. Connie McCoy. Connie McCoy.
I'm Connie McCoy, and I've lived in Wheat Ridge for 49 years.
Could you give your address, please? And spell your last name for the clerk.
McCoy M.C. C.O.Y.
And your address?
3475 Estes Street.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sort of on follow and marry here, but I'd like to commend you on the development of Discovery Park. That was one of the best things that you guys have done for this city. It's a great addition. Every time we go by, it's full of families. I've taken my grandkids there, and they love the variety of things to do. And we've taken them to the REC Center, and they love the swimming. They like everything about it. This city is for families to come into and know they are well taken care of by our city council and their decisions. The one thing that is concerning to me is the bringing in of marijuana industry. People aren't going to want to move into our city knowing that we have this industry, that their children are going to have to be subjected to. I think we are on the wrong path, but we can change it. One way is to put a ban on any other pot shops and grow factories. Arvada, Golden, and Lakewood have opted out, knowing what it could bring to their cities. They did their research. I think this council will make the better decision on banning further marijuana shops and grow houses. It brings in a bad element. We're all better than that. You have done a good job on making this city a great place to live. Please consider a decision to put a stop to the marijuana industry here by banning any new shops and grow houses. Do the right thing for our community and keep it safe for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Kelly Bailey. And John Clark will be next, if you want to stand up or be ready. Bailey. Spell your last name and please give your address.
It's my husband's fault, so it's a goofy spelling. B.A.I.L.L.I.E. And my address is 4825 Wadsworth Boulevard.
Thank you.
I am not here for some big discussion. I know there's lots of development that is generating lots of discussion among city members. I am actually just inquiring about a lesser-known development that's happening at 4701 and 4711 Wadsworth Boulevard. My understanding it's by Golden Orchard Development. And as our neighborhood had a meeting last April of 2013, we were able to meet with the developer. It's gone dormant except for the last six to eight weeks. We've had someone from the city inquiring about environmental surveys for the said property, and there's been surveys going on at the property with flags being put in. I've contacted the community development department to find out what's happening, just to kind of be in the loop, but I have not heard back from their research yet. So I am just curious. It doesn't involve pot. It doesn't involve 38th. It doesn't involve Walmart. So I am just curious. It's not against development across the street. We just want to make sure the scale is appropriate for the neighborhood, and we're staying informed.
Okay, maybe you can get together with Mr. Johnston either later today, excuse me, or tonight, or tomorrow. Do you want to give her your card, and perhaps you can reconnect? Here's the fellow you need to talk to. All right. May I have Mr. Clark?
Good evening. I'm John Clark, 4665 Swadley, here in Wheat Ridge. I was going to keep it brief. I only had two things on my agenda. But I would like to start out by thanking the city and the council, and especially Councilwoman Wooden, for bringing the educators in and talking, because I don't know if Griff Worth knows it or not, but I'm scheduled to do the next eight years between both my kids with him, so I hope he's ready for that. So again, I just appreciate that. So the first thing I was actually bringing up was regarding the 90-day moratorium on the pot shops, or what's left of it, probably 70 days or so. And I realize everybody here is very busy. I got kids. I got a job. I got two jobs. I got, you know, kids in 4H and everything else. And we're all very busy between our work lives and everything else. But I found a little bit of time to do some research on not only the marijuana industry as a whole, but understanding, trying to dig a little deeper in understanding the commercialization and the marketing of this product, and not just the legalization. So the only thing I can do is urge the council to spend this time wisely on how this industry has taken the legalization of marijuana and exploited it well beyond what the voters of Colorado had attended a couple of years ago. Just please, just spend the time, do the research, excuse me, and do the right thing, because there's a whole lot more to it than I can say in this little three-minute soundbite. And there's a lot of good information out there, if you look for it. There's groups out there. It's all over the internet. There's a lot of good information. So, real quickly, secondly, I'd like to urge everybody to vote no on 2B. I just find it a little hard, in my personal opinion, to imagine spending somewhere around $10 million to tear up perfectly good concrete, perfectly good asphalt, power lines, water lines, sewer lines, to narrow a street, and then turn around and hear about how far behind we are on infrastructure spending, roads, streets, bridges, sidewalks, and how we need to borrow, borrow $40 million on the other ballot measure at a cost of approximately $30 million just in debt servicing. It'd be the first time we, you know, we're talking about putting the city of Wheat Ridge in debt for the first time ever, ever, in its history. So I would just like to urge everyone to vote no on both ballot measures. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Jennifer Shepherd, followed by Jennifer Yates. Jennifer, your last name and address, please.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Jennifer Shepherd, S.H.E.P.H.E.R.D., and I live at 7 Twilight Drive. And actually, I just wanted to just say a thank you. I'm really, really excited for the Wheat Ridge Committee for Educational Excellence. I just heard that there was an article in the Your Hub on Thursday that introduced the program. So as a new mom entering the schools, we just, I have a kindergartner who just started, and really so much about our schools is just word of mouth, is moms talk, and what school do you like, what school do you like, and, and school numbers, as far as their ratings and their test scores. And again, truly, truly, what do those test scores mean? So, and I'll be honest, as we met people, my home school is Vivian, and actually, we ended up choicing into Stober. We actually were wait-listing. We were number 47 at Prospect Valley, which actually Prospect Valley is closer to our neighborhood. So, but just, we met so many moms who are going through the process, and it tends to be the Stober, the Prospect Valley, and the Maple Grove that everybody's choosing into. So, and I had heard that the principal at Vivian is fantastic, and that I'm actually very, very sad that I didn't give her a chance and give them a chance to meet them. And again, as we, as we moms speak again, what if we did all go to our home schools? Again, what would that do? But when we have the choice to bring, to send your kid to a better school, of course you're going to do that. So, so excited for the summit next week, for all the schools to present their case. And then I see Joyce Men wearing in the seats over there, and I just wanted to say thank you. We're over at Discovery Park often, and the picnic tables were moved further away from the skate park. So now the pot smokers and the cigarette smokers are a little bit further away. They're kind of tucked back in the corner. So thank you so much for making that park a little bit more of a beautiful place. Thank you so much, Council.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Yates. I live at 3700 Miller Street, and I have some suggestions of things that I would like to see discussed before our time runs out on the 90-day moratorium on retail sales. First of all, my, my number one opinion and suggestion would be not to allow any more marijuana facilities or expansion of existing facilities in Wheat Ridge. We need to make sure that laws and regulations are being enforced, and there needs to be some discussion about how that is being done. If they are allowed, which I would not prefer, but throwing some options out here, they should only be in industrial zones. This would hopefully keep them at least at a respectable distance from our children. As far as regulations go, at a minimum, any marijuana facility should have to go through the same processes as any applicant for a liquor license, which includes public notice and needs and desire surveys in which the neighborhood is invited and welcome to be heard during that process. Consumption should never be allowed in commercial property. The spirit of Amendment 64 was to stop the criminalization of it, and for those that wanted to privately use it on private property, not as a commercial business. And then just a couple notes that I have to say on things that came up at other meetings and such. It was said that Colorado passed this Amendment 64 by an overwhelming majority, and it was less, 10%, a margin of less than 10%. And in my opinion, that is not an overwhelming majority. And then also 38th and Miller location, it was said that at some point they sold alcohol there, and I cannot find anywhere where that ever was the case. I've been in the neighborhood 20 years, and some of my neighbors have been there since 1962 and do not ever recall that. So, thank you, and hopefully we can see some of these things discussed, maybe even in a public forum.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there any other public comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight? Okay, let's move on with the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go forward with the consent agenda. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the consent agenda tonight has four items on it. Item A, Resolution Number 50-2014, Amending the Fiscal Year 2014 Open Space Fund Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation in the Amount of $350,000 for the Purpose of Constructing the Wheat Ridge Vehicle Storage Building. Item B, A Motion to Award the Bid ITB-14-10 to Growing Bear Company, Inc., in the Amount of $644,209 for the Construction of a New Wheat Ridge Vehicle Storage Building and a 10% Contingency of $64,420. Item C, Resolution Number 51-2014, Amending the Fiscal Year 2014 General Fund Budget Reflecting the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation in the Amount of $117,857 for the Purpose of Repairing Damage to the City Assets Caused by the July 7, 2014 hailstorm. And finally, Item D, A Motion to Approve Payment to the Insight Public Sector in the Amount of $51,618.51 for the Annual Renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement.
A motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve the consent agenda, items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. DiTulio. Is there any discussion?
I just have a small question. On one, see, the, from the damage from the July 7 storm, there's an, it, Searcy's going to pay the city the $117,857, but the city received some money for some of the damaged vehicles, but five of the vehicles we're not going to repair. Are we, are they going to come back at a future point to get new vehicles, or are they, we just taking them out of the fleet?
Yeah, those five vehicles are close to retirement, for lack of better words, and we just, it's not worth the funds to repair those, so those vehicles will be auctioned soon.
Will we be, will we be purchasing new vehicles at a later date to replace?
I don't know if we are on all five, but more than likely, those will be replaced along with the city's annual replacement schedule.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? We've been, we have a motion and a second. Please poll the council.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number three. Two. Excuse me, item number two. Oh, right, item number two. I turned the page. Ms. Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second public input opportunity for the 2015 budget. At issue, the process for the development of the 2015 budget is underway. An important phase of this process is offering the public opportunities to provide input to city council prior to the presentation of the 2015 proposed budget. Tonight's public input meeting is the second of two meetings scheduled. Tonight's public input meeting is the second of two meetings scheduled. The twenty fifteen budget is scheduled to be presented to City Council and the mayor on Monday, October sixth, twenty-fourteen. Following review and direction from City Council, the city will hold a public hearing on the proposed twenty-fifteen budget on Monday, October twenty-seventh, twenty-fourteen. The twenty-fifteen budget is scheduled for adoption on Monday, November tenth, twenty-fourteen. The proposed budget will be available online on the city website prior to the October sixth meeting. Additionally, a hard copy will be available in the city clerk's office and at the Wheat Ridge Library. The public is invited to provide input on the proposed twenty-fifteen budget at the October twenty-seventh and November tenth meetings.
Okay, we are also open for a public comment tonight on this, on the budget. Is there anyone that cares to speak at this point? Yes, sir. Yes, please. I don't know if you signed up or not.
There was one signed up that I saw.
Probably not.
Hi, my name is Scott Carey. I live at twenty-five Range View Drive. Carey, C-A-R-Y. Just something to think about. I looked at the twenty-fourteen budget, and I work with municipalities for work outside of Wheat Ridge on a regular basis. And one of the things that I see that helps, um, municipalities stay ahead of some of the issues that are currently, um, we, is facing in relation to people being upset about what types of businesses are going where, and, uh, different things you're doing when you're trying to do major redevelopment, is to spend a significant amount of effort on long-range planning. When I look at the goals for twenty-fourteen for your long-range planner, and that four out of five are based on constructing housing, that, to me, is not what a long-range planning department does. They look at the region, they look at the, the surrounding communities, and they try and help you, the council, make informed decisions moving forward on setting your direction. So, the only thing I was, I wanted to, to mention now is that if there was a way to help allow your planning department to focus more on the long-range planning and collaborating with your neighboring communities, I think that would be a good thing. And thank you for all your volunteer service. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else who perhaps did not sign up that wishes to comment on the two thousand and fifteen budget? Remember, that is posted, it will be posted, um, on our website.
Sorry, I'm wondering.
They're making her work over here.
October sixth.
October sixth, uh, for your review. Okay, we do not need a motion on this, so I believe, oh, we have some discussion here. Mr. Tuttulio?
Just one. I wanted to, uh, remind Council again, if we were looking at, um, expanding our neighborhood cleanup and do possibly funding one per district. I think the District One cleanup, neighborhood cleanup's been a real big success, and it does take some time, and it does take some funding for the trash, the trash dumpsters and everything. And I would really like to see each district host one and see that funding put in the budget for two thousand and fifteen, is my suggestion. I, I can't remember if I mentioned it last time, we had talked about some smaller amounts. I think Ms. Davis was out of town, and I brought it up, I can't remember. But I'd like to see at least, uh, the other districts have, have an opportunity to have a cleanup program the same day, the same month, the same, in spring. And I, there's sections in all parts of the city that really can benefit from it. So, I'd like to see that at least put in the budget as a line item to be discussed, that this is how much it would cost to do all four districts, if districts two, three, and four were interested.
Okay, thank you. And we do have another budget discussion at the end of the meeting, and perhaps we can conclude it then. Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I just wanna add to that just a minute, and I know we have the budget discussion later in the meeting. But I think not only with the cleanup is, maybe we diversify our cleanup, because I know I've had several residents ask about, you know, like chemical, like paint cans, and how do I get rid of paint cans, or computer equipment, and those types of things. So, maybe we can diversify our cleanup through the districts to also meet, uh, you know, the needs of, the different needs.
More of an environmental cleanup?
Yeah. We did do that. Little bit of both, yeah.
It'd be a good idea. Okay, um, we can go ahead and move on to item number three, which will be Mr. Fitzgerald, I'm pretty sure. And this is a, um, this particular item is a public hearing. So, Mr. Fitzgerald, please go ahead and read, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Okay, this is, uh, item number three. Council Bill Number O-nine dash two oh one four, twenty-fourteen, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at seventy-six seventy-one West Thirty-second Avenue and thirty-two ninety-nine Wadsworth Boulevard from Residential Two, R-two, to Planned Residential Development, PRD, and for approval of an outline development plan. And just as a background, um, this is a new development that's going in, and because of the strange shape of this property, some of our codes would not work in that location. So, it's just, uh, changing the, um, zoning so that it can all work.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, we do need an ordinance number on this, and then I can open the public meeting?
This is gonna be ordinance number fifteen fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven? Thank you. And you know, I forgot to tell everybody to turn your cellphones off. I heard somebody going off. I think that was our, Mr. Bob. Okay, let's go ahead and open the public miring, meeting, uh, excuse me, meeting. And all persons who wish to speak, which would be staff, is the applicant, I believe the applicant is here, and any, any, uh, citizens who wish to speak, please stand, raise your right hand, and, um, do you swear to affirm, or affirm to tell the whole truth as you understand it? If so, say I do. Thank you. You may be seated. Let's go under the staff report. Oh, she threatened it.
No, she turned it off.
I'll go, I'll go ahead with my preliminary remarks, and you can go ahead, and it looks like we've got, uh, got power now.
Madam Mayor, members of Council, for the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, and I am here to present, uh, case number WZ dash fourteen dash O-six, which is a request for approval of a zone change from R-two to Planned Residential Development. And I would like to in, enter into the record the comprehensive plan, these zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. All notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, Council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So, again, this is a zone change from R-two to Planned Residential Development. And, um, just one second. This is an aerial photo of the property. It is outlined in red. And you can see it's got somewhat of an unusual configuration. Um, the city's planned development process is a two-step process, and this is actually the first step of it, which actually would change the zoning from Residential Two to Planned Residential Development and for approval of what we call an outline development plan, and that is a general concept plan for how the property can be developed. It establishes sort of a general layout, establishes, um, development standards and so on and so forth. When we have these, uh, this type of application, there is always a pre-application, uh, meeting required, and we did have one in February of this year. And if the zone change is approved, there is still one additional step, and that would be for a site develop, a specific development plan and a plat document. So, again, outlining the process. Again, this is a two-step process. The outline development plan and zone change is the first of it, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight. And if approved, we will go on to the specific development plan. I think, for some reason, I am having slides skipped, so just bear with me, and I'll try to take you through the presentation. This is actually, uh, the first sheet, uh, or actually, the second sheet of a two-page, page outline development plan. And what it shows, um, if I can help orient you just a little bit, to the, in, in this particular slide, uh, north is to the right-hand side of the page. We've got Thirty-second Avenue down here, which would be the south end of the property, and Wadsworth over at this location. And, uh, you can see that the property is accessed by a single cul-de-sac bulb that comes in from Thirty-second Avenue and extends to the north, ending in a cul-de-sac bulb. It's more of an urban type of development than what we traditionally see in the city of Wheat Ridge. The lots, um, are somewhat smaller in size, with about a thirty-five hundred square foot minimum with a fifty-foot wide lot width. And setbacks are a little bit less than we typically see as well, with five feet on the sides. And the front and rear setbacks are modest, with also a ten-foot setback in the front and a fifteen, um, fifteen-foot setback on the rear. Uh, the maximum building coverage varies from forty to fifty percent for single-story models. And, um, that would allow, with this size of a lot, about a fifteen-hundred square foot pad up to about seventeen-hundred square feet. And, uh, the maximum height allowed is thirty-five feet. This is, uh, the first page of the outline development plan. And, um, one, one of the situations that came up with the whole development is we went to Planning Commission twice with this particular, with this particular application. We went once on June nineteenth, where Planning Commission recommended approval based on a number of reasons. And then, uh, prior to City Council public hearing, but subsequent to the Planning Commission public hearing, the developer realized that some of their models couldn't fit on the particular, uh, lot sizes. And so, we went back and re, uh, readdressed that particular, uh, development standard for building coverage. And again, this is laying out, uh, the development parameters of the property. Number of lots is shown as twenty. Minimum lot area is thirty-five hundred square feet, although the lots, as proposed, uh, can go up to about sixty-hundred, sixty-seven hundred square feet. The minimum lot width is forty-five feet, building height thirty-five. Setbacks, again, ten on the front, five on sides, fifteen on the rear. This is another schematic of the property and how it will work. Uh, the property is relatively flat, and so the drainage has been, um, designed to crest at the center of the development, and some of the, uh, some of the flows are directed to the south and then some to the north. As such, we've got several detention ponds shown. Uh, and again, this is a preliminary design, a detention down, down here on Thirty-second Avenue, and quite a bit larger one up on, in this area right here. At this point, I am going to end this, uh, this presentation and get into another one, which has more detail for you, and I do apologize. Here we go. So, again, moving through, we have already talked about, um, the fact that there's a neighborhood meeting that's required. Again, we're outline development plan. We would still have to go on to two other, uh, steps. Again, the property, you can see the configuration with Thirty-second Avenue down here at the south, Wadsworth over on the eastern side, and the northern property line of this particular lot, or lot is canted as it is perpendicular to the Rocky Mountain ditch as it runs along the northern property line. This is a copy of the zoning map. Um, again, the property is outlined in red, and what the different colors represent are the different zonings in the area. The property is currently zoned R-two, which is sort of this greenish, oakery color. We've got some R-three down to the south with multifamily, and then some other types of multifamily development further to the north. This neighborhood over here, uh, which is directly to the west, is zoned R-two with single and two-family dwellings. Slides of the property. First slide, looking, uh, from Thirty-second Avenue to the existing, one of the existing houses on the lot. The house was built in about nineteen thirty. It is currently vacant. This is looking west on Thirty-second Avenue. Um, the site frontage, I have pointed out with a yellow arrow over on the right-hand side of the image. This is looking east towards the Thirty-second and Wadsworth intersection. And then this is the, what I call the appendage, which is a piece of land that sticks out to Wadsworth, and it's only sixty feet wide, but it does have this teeny bit of frontage. The next couple slides are of the interior of the site. And you can see that it's fairly heavily wooded, but, uh, most of those trees are Siberian elms and cottonwood, which are not typically desirable by the ci, uh, but actually, some of them aren't even allowed. And again, another interior shot. This is house, the house on the eastern portion of the property, kind of sort of adjacent to Wadsworth. Here's the one on the western side. Okay, here we are back again at the first page of the outline development plan. Again, it establishes the types of development parameters, minimum lot size, minimum setbacks, and so on. And again, this is the second page of it, which shows in concept how the properties would lay out. Again, um, north is to the right-hand side with Thirty-second Avenue down here on the left-hand side of the image, Wadsworth over here, and this is the north property line where the lot, lots, uh, but, uh, the Rocky Mountain ditch. So, as far as the street design goes, we are showing a, a sort of a narrower section on the southern portion of the street. It will have curb gut, curb and gutter and sidewalk with a detached, um, tree lawn on the western side with no parking, and parking on the eastern side, um, but there is no sidewalk. As we transition into the northern portion of the street up to the cul-de-sac bulb, the right-of-way widens, and we do have a curb gutter, detached, uh, tree lawn and sidewalk on both sides of the street. Uh, these are, uh, the typical elevations that the developers provided. Essentially, they are showing, um, homes that were, will be designed around a cottage concept. They are going to be both one and two stories in size, in height. Design concepts include covered front porches, interim details, including brackets, corbels, sills, and lentils, and materials will be primarily, primarily paint lap, painted lap siding. Um, one thing of note with the design of the property is the adjacent parcels will share a driveway, um, along that common property line, which let, results in, uh, less impervious area while they still have detached garages in the back of the property. I did a little bit of an analysis on the densities in the area. Again, you can see the property outlined in, uh, red. Um, the, the gross density on the development is at about, I wanna say, six acres. Um, the net density, by the time we take out right-of-way, is eight-point-seven-three. And then just walking around the perimeter of the site, over on the west side, we've got the R-two zoning, which typically varies in size from about five units per acre up to seven. Um, to the south of the property, we've got a couple of different apartment complexes, and those are higher densities at about eighteen dwelling units per acre and twenty-one-point-four. And then even, um, across the Rocky Mountain ditch to the north, we do have some, um, additional multifamily, uh, dwelling, uh, development at about twenty-three units per acre. So, anytime we look at a zone change, we always have, um, we always reference our guiding documents. And there are three in particular that I, particular that I think are very important. The first one that we look at, looked at was the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. This was approved in two thousand and five, and it identified strategies for the city to become a community of choice. Um, it, it established goals for, uh, to be competitive with adjacent jurisdiction by increasing housing stock, the variety of housing available, and so forth. Uh, the second one we looked at was the Wadsworth Corridor Plan. They did, this, uh, document designated, uh, the property to be medium-high-density residential at about ten to twenty-one units per acre to provide a land-use transition from Wadsworth and increase pedestrian act, um, opportunities. Um, as far as the density goes, um, the proposal is at about eight units per acre, so it is below actually what's identified in the corridor plan. And then finally, our comp plan envisioned Wheat Ridge shows this in a neighborhood buffer area, and it calls for land-use transitions, um, increasing housing variety and so on. And, uh, staff does conclude that all these documents have been, have been complied with. Um, all of the affected agencies have, were contacted regarding their ability to provide service to the property. Consolidated Mutual will require, will require a looped line, um, over to Wadsworth. Wheat Ridge Fire has approved the street design. They do not need a, a secondary access. They've looked at the turning templates, and those seem to work. Uh, the Wheat Ridge Perks, uh, will require fees in lieu of land at the time of plat. Wheat Ridge Public Works has reviewed both, um, a preliminary drainage report and a traffic study, and it has approved both. And Wheat Ridge Sanitation has capacity to, capacity to serve. Um, as I mentioned previously, Planning Commission looked at this application twice. The first one was on June nineteenth. They, they did give a recommendation of approval. And I included the reasons, and then there were four conditions of approval, uh, which were detailed in your packet. We went back to, uh, Planning Commission on August twenty-first. We went back to Planning Commission on August twenty-first to take a look at the increase in the building coverage from forty to fifty percent. Staff did support that increase of building coverage for single-story models because we think it will complement the adjacent low-density residential and could provide that compatibility and perhaps encourage additional ranch-style models on the property. Planning Commission did approve that increase from forty to fifty percent with some specific language, and that has been included in your recommended motion. And finally, staff does recommend approval of the request. I did include the motions, which are the same as what Planning Commission had recommended, that we see additional architectural detail at specific development plan, that we see some better information regarding the schematic detail for lots seven through twelve, the developer take into consideration trees on the property, a crosswalk be added. And then, finally, that eight-one-story models be allowed fifty percent coverage with the remainder at forty percent. So, that does conclude staff report, and I would be happy to answer questions.
Ms. Woodin?
That little strip of land that goes to Wadsworth?
Yes.
What are their plans for that?
Actually, that is about sixty feet in width, and you can see it up on the aerial photo. This is what we're calling the pole portion of the property that extends east. The water, let's see, Denver Water is requiring a thirty-foot paved access for looping, and then, a portion of that will be detention pond, and also, they're planning to do a community garden as an amenity for the development.
So, there won't be, it won't be any access off of Wadsworth?
There will not. Well, actually, you know, there will not. Wheat Ridge, just simply for the water line looping.
Other questions?
Do you have a public comment or questions after public?
Yes. Other questions of staff? No? Then, let's, is the applicant? Ms. Davis has a question.
Let's do public comment first.
Okay. Well, actually, the applicant would be the next person. Is the applicant care to speak?
Sure. And Meredith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Fritz. Do you need my address?
Yes, please.
One oh eight two seven Bobcat Terrace, Littleton, Colorado.
And your name again, sir?
Bill Fritz.
Oh, Bill Fitz. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us be here, and we just want to, there's not too much for us to say because Meredith has done such a great job this whole way through in the planning group of Wheat Ridge. We've been working with them for over a year trying to put this together. And, you know, with all the problems we've had is because of the uniqueness of the property and with some unique ideas coming from Martin and Martin, from our builder, who's a semi-custom builder, so these are going to be semi-custom-type homes, even though they're going to be on a smaller lot, they're going to be really, they're not tiki-tack little homes that we're putting in. So, we're proud to be working with Wheat Ridge, and we're looking forward to being a good product for what's intended for Wheat Ridge.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Nope, not at this time. Then, you may sit down. We have a Leslie Meeks that wishes to speak. Under public comment.
My name is Lisa, L-E-S-A, Mullany Meeks, M-U-L-L-A-N-E-Y-meeks. I live at forty-five eighty-three Allison here in Wheat Ridge. I've been a community member for thirty-five years. I don't consider Wheat Ridge just a community, but my home. I've raised my family. I've been part of the city government on commissions, PTA, civic groups, as well as active in my church who's here, and have worked within the city for most of that thirty-five years, including owning my own small business. The first time I heard about this development was in the Neighborhood Gazette edition, July and August. And I've been looking to downsize. I am needing to get a smaller lot and a smaller home for myself because of some health issues. And I've been looking around Wheat Ridge because I don't want to move. Steps are not an option for me. I've looked at the patio homes that have a little land, but man, those homes get a lot bigger. And I read about this development in the Gazette, and I thought, this is the place for me. It allows me to stay within my community and live in a home here. And so, I was very excited about this, so I came to the last Planning Commission meeting and got to hear all that was spoken about there. And it was exciting to hear that the neighbors who are in the area around this are very pro this development. And that was encouraging for me. And I was also excited to read in that article about the city of Wheat Ridge's vision in rich, a community of choice. This is not a typical design for the city of Wheat Ridge. And a lot of the developments that I now have gone around to look at that are happening within the city of Wheat Ridge aren't. And I applaud the city for being, thinking forward, to committing themselves to grow with the other communities around them, offering people choices of housing. And I'm very excited about this. I'm hoping that everything moves forward, all the meetings that will be going on in relationship to this. I will be more than happy to come and speak for this because I personally would like a house in this community, and I think this is something that Wheat Ridge needs, especially for a lot of the citizens who are getting older. You know, the new high-rise senior housing that was put in over by First Bank, that was snapped up before it was even built. So, I applaud the city for allowing some smaller houses, some smaller lots, to be approved within this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's no further questions of the applicant or anyone else speaking, I'll close the meeting. We'll have a motion, and then, we can have discussion. Okay, I'm going to close the public meeting. Please give us a motion, Mr. Fitz.
Chair.
I move to approve ordinance fifteen fifty-seven and ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at seventy-six seventy-one West Thirty-second Avenue and thirty-two ninety-nine Wadsworth Boulevard from Residential Two, R2, to Planned Residential Development, PRD, and for approval of an outline development plan on second reading, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication for the following reasons. City Council has conducted a proper public hearing meeting, all public notice requirements as required by Section twenty-six dash one oh nine of the Code of Laws. The required rezoning has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation. And the required rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Sections twenty-six dash one one-two dash E and two sixty dash three oh three dash D of the Code of Laws with the following conditions. One, additional architectural design be required and reviewed at the time of the SDP. Two, the systematic detail for lots seven through twenty must be revised to more accurately represent the larger, narrower lots. Three, the developer must be encouraged, is encouraged, to work with the city forester to create a tree-friendly plan with consideration of old and new plantings. Four, the developer work with staff to add a crosswalk on the southern portion of the street. And five, note number two, under development standards, be modified to indicate that a maximum of eight one-story home models be allowed, a fifty percent building coverage, and the remainder one- and two-story home models have a maximum of forty percent building coverage.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Excuse me, Mr. Starke. The motion has been made, and seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. Starke?
Ms. Recker, I have a couple of things for you. Can we revisit the southern thirty feet of tract A that's going to be paved for an underground water line? And I guess I have, I'm thinking about that we're going to pave this for the benefit of a water district that needs to come in and dig, I guess, their line down there, and they want to make sure they've got a paved surface to dig on. But what does that do to the surface treatment?
Well, so, the portion that Mr. Starke is talking about is this, which is the flagpole piece that extends out to Wadsworth. It's sixty feet wide. Wheat Ridge Water District, because they get their water from Denver Water, has to follow the Denver Water guidelines. And their requirement typically is for a fifty-foot-wide non-exclusive easement or a thirty-foot-wide exclusive easement. It does need to be paved. Typically, those coincide with some sort of street installation. So, the southern portion of this piece will be paved, our surface paved, and then, the remainder of it, there's about thirty feet left. There's a small detention pond that'll probably be located in this area. And then, with the leftover space, we were suggesting a community garden be provided. So, it's not specifically Wheat Ridge Water, whereas it is Denver Water's requirement.
And the packet says consolidated mutual. Are we consolidated mutual?
You know what? I am wrong. It is consolidated mutual, but it's the same rule.
And so, will it be paved all the way to the, is it Yukon Street?
Yes.
So, it's paved all the way there? And so, are cars going to be driving down there and parking on there?
No, there's actually supposed to be curb and gutter installed along that, which would prohibit cars to enter from this side. And then, there will have to be some sort of gating mechanism over on the Wadsworth side so that access is not permitted.
And this is a requirement from Denver Water Department?
Yes.
Because you can't have water lines underground?
Good question.
It's not paved. And, thank you. And then, there was something about the southern sidewalk that I didn't get.
Okay. So, when we looked, when we looked at this property, it's got some very unusual dimensions. The southern portion is very narrow, and it widens up in the northern portion. So, we have a different street section proposed for the southern side than we do the northern side. On the northern portion, you can see it widens out, I think, to about fifty-nine feet of right-of-way. And we're showing a full-street construction, public improvements, a five-foot-wide tree lawn, and a five-foot-wide sidewalk with parking on both sides of this portion. Because the area in here is so narrow, it's a smaller street section, I want to say forty-three feet. So, again, we'll have full-width paving. On the western side, there will be a curb gutter and sidewalk, a detached sidewalk with a five-foot tree lawn. On this portion, which would be the eastern side of the southern portion of the street, there will be no parking, and so, there will just be installation of curb and gutter and a five-foot-wide strip of landscaping so folks don't open their car doors into a sidewalk.
And did I recall in reading that there was a fence between, on that, on that side abutting the neighboring property to the east?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there additional, is there additional discussion? Nope. Then, we can go ahead and poll the council?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. If I could just offer a comment in regard to Mr. Starke's comments? We share, I think, the concern in terms of the merits of paving that thirty feet. Jump in here, Meredith, if I'm speaking out of term, but if council wishes to entertain a condition that would suggest that staff work with those water providers to see if there's a modification of that that would be acceptable, and if that's the pleasure of council, we'd be glad to do that. That won't be finally resolved in terms of what that looks like until we go through the plating process and easements get dedicated as part of that plating.
I appreciate that. It seems like we're, you know, it's one thing to pave a piece of property when you have a valid reason to drive something on it and you need an all-surface weathered road, but I'm, you know, we're just creating more impervious surfaces in our landscape and to do it somewhat arbitrarily or capriciously or whatever adjective you'd like to put on that. So, I would, you know, however, we would want to frame a recommendation that if you could work with the water district to abate that requirement, I think that'd be better for our community.
You're thinking of rock or gravel or something like that, or large rock or something?
Yeah, or just, you know, continue the garden. You know, if the water department wants to dig up a water main, they'll dig your garden up in a heartbeat, so.
Mr. Zatulio?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment that we direct staff to go ahead and work with the water department to look at alternatives besides paving and have staff work with Denver Water internally to maybe correct this.
And I would second that.
Okay. We have got a motion in place, so.
It's the amendment.
It's an amendment.
Yeah. So, we're going to amend the motion to add that the staff work with the water department to facilitate a different surface or at least to start that negotiation or conversation.
And just to be clear, I mean, I think the understanding is, you know, whether we're successful, I guess, in negotiating that is to be determined. We wouldn't want that to be limiting on the zoning in terms of, but we're glad to work in that direction.
So, we are ready to vote on the motion as amended? Oh, I'm sorry. First, we have to vote on the amendment.
Who was the second for the amendment?
Second was Mr. Zatulio? No, Mr. Starke made the second.
The amendment? I made the motion. Mr. Starke, it's second.
Okay. And you were the second?
Mr. Zatulio, restate the motion.
My motion was to allow direct staff to go ahead and work with the Denver, is it Denver Water Department?
Well, Consolidated Mutual.
Consolidated Mutual to look at some alternatives for paving that section of thirty feet, but not to delay or this project.
The whole project. All right. And we have a second from Mr. Starke, and please poll the council on the amendment.
Motion carries seven zero.
And now, let's go ahead and vote on the original motion as amended.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number four, Council Bill twelve two zero one four. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill twelve dash two thousand and fourteen ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at forty-three sixty Gray Street from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood, case number WZ fourteen dash zero seven Jeromano. The applicant is requesting approval of a zoning change from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood for property located at forty-three sixty Gray Street. The proposed rezoning area includes one parcel, the total size, which is approximately point-nine, one-nine acre. The purpose of the zoning change is to expand possible use of the property, including the option of converting the existing structure back to residential occupancy. At this time, the applicant has not proposed any new development or modifications to the site. If the property is redeveloped in the future under the proposed MUN zoning, an administrative site plan review would be required to confirm that the proposed development meets the standards of the mixed-use zoning district.
This is first reading, but do we have any staff report?
Not deceiving.
Nope. Then, we can go ahead and move on to the motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Council Bill twelve dash two thousand and fourteen and ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at forty-three sixty Gray Street from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood on first reading. Order published, public hearing set from Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven PM in the City Council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication. Is a motion in order?
Motion. We've had the motion. I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Woodin, was it? I believe we can poll the council?
Motion carries seven zero.
And moving on to item number five, Council Bill thirteen two zero one four. I believe that's Mr. Starke.
I think I turned the lights back on.
Oh, yeah. There's a little.
Oh, you have a presentation again? Okay, okay, Will. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce item number five. This is Council Bill number thirteen dash two thousand and fourteen, and ordinance repealing and reenacting certain sections of Chapter Five of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge concerning the Building Code, the Mechanical Code, the Plumbing Code, the Property Maintenance Code, the Energy Conservation Code, the Residential Code, the Fire Code, the Fuel Gas Code, the National Fire Protection Association seventy National Electrical Code, NFPA ninety-nine standards for healthcare facilities, and penalties for violation of the same. Is a motion in order?
Sounds like we have a staff Sounds like we have a staff report. Is it on this one or later? Okay. This is first reading? Do we have any staff report on this one?
No.
Not yet? Okay, then we can go ahead with the motion?
Well, with that, I will move to approve Council Bill number 13-2014, an ordinance repealing and reenacting certain sections of Chapter 5 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge concerning the Building Code, the Mechanical Code, the Plumbing Code, the Property Maintenance Code, the Energy Conservation Code, the Residential Code, the Fire Code, the Fuel Gas Code, the National Fire Protection Association 70 National Electrical Code, and the NFPA 99 Standards for Healthcare Facilities and penalties for violation of the same. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, October 13, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tullio. Is there any discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, that takes care of the items. We'll leave the meeting open, because we're going to have a couple of discussion items. Number six, Mr. Goff, would you be leading that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jay. Thank you, council, for allowing us to bring this discussion item for tonight on tonight's regular meeting. We've been working on this for several months and needed to get this in front of you as soon as possible. The City of Wheat Ridge has been, has received two proposals to participate in a solar garden agreement through Excel Energy's Solar Rewards Community Program. We received one proposal from Clean Energy Collective and Sunshare LLC. And representatives of both companies are here this evening. They will not be given presentations, but they are here to answer any questions, if you have any questions of each of them after the presentation. You know, I think there are many benefits of bringing this program to the City of Wheat Ridge. It's fairly, here come the lights now. You know, it's a fairly new program, and we don't have the expertise in-house to analyze these types of proposals. And so, we looked outside and brought some help in Lotus Engineering and Sustainability. Did an analysis for us of these two different programs. They also worked with the City of Lakewood, who also has gone through the same process. Some of our neighboring communities have or are looking at signing up for this program. Lakewood, City Lakewood has gone with Clean Energy, or no, they've gone with Clean Energy Collective. Arvada and Westminster, I believe, both have gone with Sunshare. There's many other districts and other quasi-governmental organizations that have also signed up. So, we brought this in front of you tonight, and as I mentioned, we contracted with Lotus Engineering. And Emily Artale is here to give a presentation and answer any questions that you may have. And as I mentioned, representatives from both companies are also here to answer any questions. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emily, who's going to give you a presentation.
Emily, what was your last name again?
My last name is Artale, which is A-R-T-A-L-E.
Thank you.
Can you hear me better now? Okay. Yes, so thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As Patrick mentioned, I was the one that did the evaluation for the City of Wheat Ridge, looking at the proposals submitted by Clean Energy Collective and the proposals submitted by Sunshare. And for the remainder of the presentation, I will refer to as Clean Energy Collective as CEC. If there's any other acronyms I throw out without defining, please stop me. So, to give you a little background, Solar Garden Program is new to Colorado. It was enacted with, by Bill Ritter in 2010, and it took a couple more years for the rules to come out. So, it's a fairly new program. And Excel calls this program the Solar Rewards Community Program. If you were to participate in a solar garden, know that there are three parties that you would work with. There's Excel Energy, the solar garden provider, which would be CEC or Sunshare, and then the city yourself. So, the relationship between Excel Energy and the solar garden providers, that a 20-year interconnection agreement would be signed, and then the acquisition of renewable energy certificate payments would be agreed upon. And then, the city would sign a 20-year contract with the solar garden provider to either buy panels or buy the electrons generated by a certain number of panels from their solar garden. And then, Excel Energy would issue an incentive to the city to incentivize them to participate in the program as bill credits. So, this is a really great program. It's really amazing for Colorado that this is in place. And as with any program, you can imagine, there's lots of details. So, while it's simple in concept, I think it can be quite complicated once you start to drill down. And solar gardens for our area, so that when I'm talking about our area, I'm talking about Excel Energy's territory in the state of Colorado. The program here is very new. There is not a solar garden that's been operational for more than 12 months. And so, that means we cannot compare previous performance predictions against actual performance. Everything about the performance and the financial projections are projected, they're based on assumptions and based on data that is sound, is reasonable, but we can't compare to actual performance. And then, there's two solar garden developers that you would be able to go with, CEC and Sunshare, because they have won the contracts with Excel Energy. And each solar garden developer has a different model. I mean, now, they're each here, and I'm going to talk about the models on their behalf, so I hope I don't mess it up too bad, but in a simple nutshell, with CEC, you would own the panels. You would buy a certain number of panels from their solar garden. With Sunshare, you would not own the panels. You would buy the electrons generated by the panels, and Sunshare would retain ownership of those panels. So, with all of these different factors in the mix, it was requested to perform an evaluation of these proposals and essentially due diligence. These next few images are going to walk you through the different business models and the different flows of money with each of the different options. And there's going to be five that we'll go through and three that I'll spend significant time on. So, this represents CEC's business model. So, with CEC, this, so I'm talking about, let me see if I can find this out, this top, just this top portion right now. With CEC, they propose to the city a net purchase price, and this would allow the city to purchase 972 panels in their commercially-lived Jefferson County solar garden. And then, once those panels have been purchased, the city will receive electrons from those panels. And CEC proposes that they will receive, sorry, to make this economically attractive, CEC proposes that the city will receive a savings stream and an income stream. The income stream will be in the form of rec payments, so that portion of rec payments that CEC has received from Excel will be given to the city. These are fixed, and these are guaranteed for the life of the contract. CEC also proposes that the city will receive savings in the form of bill credits. These will be issued directly from Excel Energy. These represent savings on your bill. So, it's kind of, this is what you would have spent on electricity if you hadn't had the solar garden in place. And then, in the event that the savings stream and the income stream doesn't cover your electricity bill, you will have to pay Excel Energy for the difference. Now, you can pay for this model either through a capital contribution or through financing. And it's really the same model, but there's the financing component involved. So, the lending agency would give you the money to give to CEC to purchase these panels. And while the whole arrangement is happening, while you're receiving rec payments, while you're receiving bill credits, you would also be paying back the lending agency for the panels. And then, once the lending agency has been paid for, it will just continue, as I showed in the other model. And what this does will extend your payback period a little bit and reduce your cumulative savings over that time. Now, Sunshare has two models they've submitted to the city. So, you might have seen Sunshare's original proposal, which was sent a couple months ago. Sunshare submitted two new proposals this past Friday. So, the information in this presentation reflects those new proposals, where the information in the report reflects the older proposal. So, I'll try to differentiate that. Now, this is one option. This is called without a prepay option or with zero down. So, in this case, Sunshare proposes that the city will pay a solar services agreement, which is a monthly fee to Sunshare. It's 12 cents per kilowatt hour, and it escalates at 2.9% per year for the duration of the contract. And this will allow the city to own those electrons. Again, not the panels, but just the electrons. And through this course of 20 years, they propose that the city will be able to offset these costs through a savings stream. So, they will receive bill credits through Excel Energy. So, under this model, the city will not receive income through rec payments. They will only receive savings through bill credits. And then, the idea is, when these savings become more than the payment to Sunshare, then the city will see a net savings. And then, in the event that the bill credit doesn't cover all of the utility payment, the city will have to pay Excel for a portion of the electricity cost. Now, under Sunshare's second option, there is a prepay option. This is a hybrid between what CEC is offering and the other option provided by Sunshare. In this model, again, looking just at the top for a second, the city would give Sunshare a prepayment, so an upfront cost to pay for those electrons, just the electrons, not the physical asset. And then, the transaction remains the same. Excel Energy would issue bill credits to the city as savings, and then the idea is that the city would reallocate those savings to then pay back the fee that they paid Sunshare. And because this has a prepay option, there's always the option of financing that goes along with it. And I have to say that with CEC's model, I was actually able to call a lending agency who's done this and dig a little bit deeper, figure out what that financing model would look like. Because this was issued on Friday, I haven't been able to do that. So, this is just an illustration, just to demonstrate what this could look like. Basically, and I use the model from CEC, so a lending agency would give city the money, the city would then use that money to pay Sunshare, and then the city would pay back the lease and receive bill credits as savings from Excel Energy. So, the next few slides are going to show you the financial metrics taken from each proposal. So, I took these numbers from each proposal. I didn't change them. I didn't, and for Sunshare's new proposal, I didn't evaluate them. So, CEC proposes a city would pay about $777,000, and they project that the city would see first-year savings of $82,000. And this $82,000 is the combination of projected bill credits, so savings, of about $75,000, and an income stream of $7,400. So, again, the income stream of rec payments will be fixed, guaranteed for the life of the contract. The bill credit savings are not guaranteed, and they will fluctuate on an annual basis. But this is the first-year projected savings. And when you add up all of these savings over 20 years, CEC proposes that the city will save $1.6 million. So, this is the cumulative savings with that net purchase price subtracted out, resulting in a payback of about eight to nine years. So, a really attractive payback for a solar system. So, these are the financial metrics of Sunshare's original proposal. And I just share these with you so that you have them if you did take a look at the final report. So, these are the numbers that match the report. The next two slides will show the financial metrics that are included in Sunshare's revised proposal. So, this slide is for the prepayment option. So, Sunshare proposes that the city will spend about $553,000. So, this is the one lump sum payment. They project that the first-year savings will be about $72,000. If you remember, this is just from bill credits. This does not include rec payments, only bill credits. And then, when you add up all of these savings, they've provided a range of possible cumulative savings over 20 years that range from $950,000 to 1.6 million, and they result in a payback of six to seven years. So, I have to say, these paybacks are really good. Typically, for solar energy systems, you don't see them less than 10 years. So, for Sunshare's second option, there's a zero-money-down option. So, this is a good idea if you're not wanting to put forward that capital contribution, if you're not interested in financing. So, they propose that the city would pay Sunshare that monthly rate, that SS8 rate, 12 cents per KWH, and it's escalated at 2.9% per year. They project that the first-year savings will be about $27,000. And then, again, they provide a range of cumulative savings for 20 years that range from $370,000 to 1.1 million. Because there's no upfront cost, the savings would be, or the payback would be immediate. So, I think the city is in a really good position, because this program has a lot of benefits, not just for the city, but for the community, and I would say also for Colorado as a whole. So, I've listed some benefits here for your review. This list isn't meant to be exhaustive, but just some ideas to get the conversation started. Obviously, solar gardens getting, promoting renewable energy has the ability to meet city's sustainability goals. It will help the city save money, and maybe even more importantly, it will keep money locally. So, money that you would otherwise be giving to Excel Energy, you can keep right here in your own community. It will demonstrate the city's commitment to sustainability, promote the city as a leader, not only to your citizens, but to the other front-range communities. As Patrick mentioned, a lot of front-range communities are looking at solar gardens. I work with public agencies all around the state, and with our front-range communities, this is one of the hottest topics, maybe next to medical or recreational marijuana, but this is a pretty big deal. And then, with solar energy, obviously, will also reduce greenhouse gas emissions and air pollutants, since we'll be getting our energy from the sun versus coal and natural gas. It'll have the city be an early adopter of a progressive solution. And both models have established and robust operation and maintenance, so the city won't have to worry about maintaining either system, and you can rest assured that both systems will have maximum production. And then, both solar garden providers are proposing that the city join their Jefferson County solar gardens, so that you won't have to worry about land management issues, because the county will be dealing with that. Now, each model offers their unique benefits, right? They're different models, and that makes sense. So, under CEC's model, because the city would actually be purchasing the physical asset, they have, that would give you the ability to receive additional savings after the 20-year contract period. So, some would say solar panels and the equipment could last 25 years, some would say it could last all the way to 45 years. As long as Excel Energy's program exists and that they offer bill credits as an incentive, there is the potential the city could receive additional savings. The other benefit is that CEC's solar garden is currently operational. It went live in Jefferson County in, was it August, July? Very, August, very recently. It's up by White Ranch off 93rd and Golden, and Lakewood is currently participating in that one. Now, under Sunshare's model, there is the option for zero down. So, like I said, that might make sense if there's not an interest to put money down on this program, and there is the potential to save money immediately. And then, with Sunshare's model, because you're only buying the electrons, you're only paying for the electricity generated. So, I'm going to go off on a tiny little tangent, and I want to bring something up, because it always, well, typically goes unnoticed and undiscussed. And this is how solar gardens can help you meet your sustainability goals. So, I understand that the city is committed to becoming more sustainable. And under these models, or under any grid-tied solar system in Excel Energy's territory, Excel Energy will buy the recs from that system. And the recs represent the environmental attributes of that system. So, essentially, Excel will own the environmental attributes of the system. And this is okay. This is not a deal breaker. But I would recommend, if you choose to pursue a solar garden and you're looking for language to market the benefits, that you look at industry best practices of how best to illustrate the benefits of the solar garden. Because according to the USPA, there's certain things that one should not say when they're trying to claim, like greenhouse gas reductions, things like that. And there's more information about that in the report, and I can go into more detail. But I didn't want to go into too much, because I know that's not really the focus of this. So, it's my opinion that there's two primary things that will cause risk to the city with engaging in either program. And the first is, well, this is just a new program. And that's okay. All programs are new at one point. All programs start at one point. But what that means is there's just not a longstanding legacy from which we can learn. So, we can't look at previous projections and then compare it to actual and see, okay, what happened? We have to use reasonable expectations. We have to look at conservative assumptions. And the second one is that a lot of the factors that are used to determine financial performance fluctuate and are not guaranteed. And these include the bill credits, electricity consumption, electricity generation, and then, of course, our electricity rates. And then, there's some other minor risks that I've identified, and I would either say the likelihood of these are pretty low, or they're pretty minor, as long as the city is prepared for them. So, if the city were to generate a lot of excess bill credits, thinking that this could be a moneymaker, well, they will, you will lose out on them. thinking that this could be a moneymaker, well, you will lose out on them after 20 years. So in no case will bill credits be issued as a payment. So it's good to keep aware of that. And if there's any fluctuations in bill credits, it will not impact the price that you paid for solar under either model. And then I'm of the opinion that the projected payback periods and cumulative savings that I showed you earlier on in the presentation represent best case scenarios. So I've done a lot of research on this effort. I've talked to dozens of people, PUC, Excel Energy, various municipalities, various energy experts. And then I've been in the field right here, working in Boulder and Denver and all over the front range for the last six years. And what I would say, one of the biggest financial risks is the fluctuating bill credits. And this is okay, I think it's okay, as long as we approach it knowing what the impact of these bill credits could be on the financial performance. So the way that bill credits are calculated today is they are a function of your utility rates. So as your utility rates go up, you get more bill credits. As your utility rates go down, you get less bill credits. And what this means is that you will get less cumulative savings if the utility rates aren't as high as predicted, and your payback will be longer. And the way that they're set up is Excel Energy can revise them every year. So every year for 20 years, they will revise them. And they do that with all their incentive programs. They don't guarantee, I don't think they really guarantee anything because it's all a function of their cost of doing business and of the market. So I created this graph just to demonstrate the potential of what bill credits could do on the financial performance of a solar garden project. These are not based on anyone's proposal. These are based on fictional numbers that I made up. So my thought was, okay, these fluctuating rates are okay. As long as we have, we can define two boundaries of risk and come up with a realistic scenario. So based on my experience in the industry, we typically say utility rates in Excel Energy's territory will increase by three or three and a half percent. And both of the proposals that were provided by the solar garden companies say they'll increase at 5%. So I decided to use this as our upper boundary of risk. So 5% increase could happen, but from what I've seen, the likelihood of this happening and sustaining itself over many, many years, especially 20 years, is probably pretty low. Likewise, I defined a worst case scenario. So let's assume Excel Energy just, I don't know, they don't want to do bill credits anymore. They don't like the program. And so I chose a decrease in escalation rate. So this was an arbitrary number, minus five. And again, this is really worst case, I don't think this is going to happen. Excel Energy needs solar gardens to work so that they can maintain compliance with their renewable energy standard. So you'll see the blue and the green line are the two boundaries of risk that I defined for this exercise. And then one would assume if these are boundaries of risk, then reality will happen in the middle. And what I assume too is that bill credits won't fluctuate at a constant rate. They will vary at different rates over 20 years. And so in the report, I defined a hypothetical scenario to represent this. This doesn't mean this is what I think will happen. It's just to illustrate, this is a, you know, this could happen. This is a more moderate, a more conservative assumption. And the point I'm trying to make here is that you'll see, if you look at this red line, this represents our moderate approach, you have less cumulative savings and a longer payback period than with the blue approach. So I would recommend, as you're looking at these proposals, as you're planning for the financial performance, to just use conservative, realistic assumptions as possible. And I've documented what I feel those to believe in the report. But certainly, if you have any questions, the solar garden companies know this in and out, and they can definitely tell you their perspectives and their conversations with Excel, what they think will happen. So of course, with any program like this, it's not just about financial metrics. There's other considerations that I put together for your review. First and foremost, you all probably know this better than I do. If you're going to finance something, you will incur additional cost, which will impact your total cumulative savings and your projected payback period. And then we have this really cheesy saying in the energy industry that you should eat your efficiency veggies first and do your renewable energy dessert second. The idea here is that you should improve the efficiency of all your sites as much as possible before you start investigating in renewable energy. The third point is that the efficiency of these panels is estimated. And I just wanted to underscore that all of this is based on best guesses, reasonable data, but they're predictions, they're projections. And so if we just understand these and the implications of these, I think it will prepare us moving forward. And under CEC's model, because you would own the panels, the equipment may need to be upgraded at some point, and this would be paid through an O and M trust. And I won't go into those details, but there's an O and M trust that would cover that. And under Sunshare's model, their lender has a security interest in the garden that you would participate in. And then finally, the last point I wanted to raise, because sometimes this is a big deal for public agencies, is that solar gardens will not reduce demand at any site. So solar gardens will be located somewhere else. There will be a production meter at that site. So it won't be able to impact your demand use at all. So this is a very detailed, kind of cumbersome table that I put together that compares the different proposals. So Patrick sent out a very similar table and a memo. And that included Sunshare's original proposal. So I updated that table. So you'll see CEC is on the left side, and then Sunshare's two options are on the right side. So the great news is, both companies are really fantastic. They have really strong and good reputations in this area. They're both expanding their networks and adding more municipalities all of the time. But there are differences in their approaches. So I've mentioned a lot of those before, and I'm just going to revisit some of those really quickly for your benefit. So under CEC's model, you will own the panels themselves. You will receive a savings stream as rec payments, which are only about 10% of the total cost, so it's not going to be significant, but it is a contributor. And you will receive a savings stream as bill credits. There is the potential to receive additional savings after the 20-year contract is ended, and CEC's Jefferson County Solar Garden is already operational in life. Under Sunshare's option, you will receive savings as bill credits only. And you will not own the panels. You will only own the electricity generated by those panels, or I keep referring to as the electrons. There's no, CEC, or, sorry, Sunshare has an option for no upfront cost, which means you don't have to consider financing, and the savings would be immediate. I think that the risks for both of them are pretty much similar to one another, so I won't go into that too much. But I will point out that the cost and the savings. So CEC's model, the cost is about $777,000. Under Sunshare's zero, this is really hard to say, all these different things. Under Sunshare's zero down model, there is the SSA of 12 cents per KWH that escalates at 2.9% each year. And then there's the prepayment option, $553,000. Now, I calculated a worst case, a moderate case, and a best case scenario for each option. And then the report, you will see, I really went into detail. For this presentation, I'm just going to do it more on a high level. So I just want to point out the moderate scenario because that's what I am proposing would be more realistic. So if you look at the numbers for CEC's model and for Sunshare's prepayment option, you'll see that both moderate scenarios project a savings of about $1 million. And under Sunshare's zero down option, the moderate scenario is about half a million dollars. And no, I wouldn't take these exact numbers to the bank. There's a lot of assumptions that go in here, a lot of predictions. But I think looking at the numbers, big picture, gives you a sense of magnitude of, relatively, of what you can expect. And these next two slides are basically that same information, but I included a net present value. So you can see the net present value for CEC's array without financing. They're both, they're positive for both the moderate case scenario and the best case scenario. And under Sunshare's model, you'll see for the zero down option, the net present value is positive for both the moderate case and the best case scenario. And there are three net present, positive net present values for the prepayment option. So I am an engineer, I'm not a financing person. I don't know about net present value very much. But what I do understand is that a positive net present value means that this is a good thing. You will save money, this is a good investment. And I don't think you can go wrong with either proposal. And the last thing that I want to, I want to let you know as you're making decisions about this, as you're planning for it, is that the city most likely will have to continue to pay Excel Energy for a portion of the electricity cost. This is simply, this is simply the way the program is designed. Bill credits are designed as a fraction of utility rates, and that fraction is debatable, but let's say it's about 70%. And obviously, generation may not always exceed your production. But as long as you have all of these things in mind, I feel that this is the information you need to be able to make an informed decision. So in closing, from all the research that I've done, all the conversations that I've had, I fully believe that solar gardens are a really fantastic option for the city and for the residents of the region. And there's a ton of really great benefits that they will bring to your community. And there are some risks, but I feel that by adequately preparing these through reasonable expectations and through using conservative assumptions, the city can easily prepare for these risks and not be too surprised when something happens. And then, of course, there's also the non-financial risks and considerations that the city can take into account. So that is all I have, and thank you so much for listening to me walk you through this seemingly simple concept, but not always.
Thank you, Emily. That was a lot of information.
It's a lot in my head, I feel like I understand it, and I even, like, wait, what was that?
And a variety of reasons and thinking to do, oh, do we have some questions for Emily? Yes, Mr. Urban.
So with respect to the bill credits that are received, what you're indicating is that no matter how much energy is generated, whether it's from Sunshare or CEC, that we may only receive a portion of the bill credits that may be available based on that generation? Or is it?
So the way that it works, bill credit rates are calculated as a function of your utility rate, and they are unique to each site, and they're actually manually calculated each year. So Excel Energy has allowed the solar garden developers to size their system at 120% of the consumption at your site, with the idea being that since bill credits are less than your rates, perhaps the excess size will bring the bill credits to be, you know, closer to your utility rates. But I would say it will be likely that you'll have to pay Excel Energy for electricity. But however, and it's included in the report, it include it here, even when you combine the payment to Excel Energy after bill credits are applied, and you combine that with the payment to either CEC or Sunshare, you will still come out ahead. You will still save a lot more money than if you just continue to pay Excel Energy. And that's really the beauty of solar gardens. It's to, in my opinion, to do good things for the environment, but also to bring real economic value to communities.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Emily, do I understand this correctly? I'm talking about the CEC proposal. There's a cost of $776,000. Then you show a moderate scenario savings of $1,016,000, the difference of which is about $240,000.
Okay, sure, let me clarify.
And that, we don't know over what period of time that is. But am I correct in thinking that the saving, and this is without financing, so the savings you're quoting there is about $240,000?
No, that's not correct, and I should have made, I should have made this more clear in my presentation. Sorry about that. So the moderate scenario that I've presented is a savings of $1 million over 20 years with the net purchase price already taken out.
Okay.
So it'd be $1.7 million.
No profit.
Over 20 years. Does that make sense?
Okay, so what would that be if you have a 4% financing?
That, do you mean, what would the savings?
Well, on page 28, there is a cumulative savings of $762,000 over 15 years with a 4% loan.
Oh, okay, okay. So in CEC's proposal, they included two financing scenarios. And I believe, I can't remember, I think this is for the best case scenario. So under that scenario, after the loan is paid for, the total cumulative savings would be $762,000. So these total cumulative savings are always net, are always after your investment has been.
So this is the five years after, this is a 15-year loan. So this is the five years after that loan, using the 20-year figure for savings.
You're right, that's a good point. I'm not sure, I think it, I think it is, I do think it is. CEC, do you have?
I have a question.
Okay.
He needs to come to the microphone.
Sir, can you get?
I think this is in your package too. I'm Mike Malone with CEC. If you choose to participate in a 15-year Tabor compliant financing with zero down, at the end of that period of time, your net cash flows will be about $1.36 million positive after you've paid off the loan and own the panels. So that would correspond to the 1.594 that she has, and the best case estimate, our best case estimate is 1.36 after you've retired the lease.
Okay, yeah, I can't find that here. There's just a lot of figures here.
It's on page 27.
Page 27.
The top graph is, is that what you're speaking to? The top table?
Yeah, I guess in the long document, this page is, in your long document, they have, right?
A version, a version of it is, it'd be in the appendix.
My page 27 doesn't have that table. Oh, here's the top table, yeah, I got it.
So in a 4%, a 15-year.
Make sure you speak into the microphone.
Tabor compliant lease, you would have paid $1 million, $1,300,000 over that 15-year period of time in lease payments. And your net cash flow with the renewable energy credit payment and the on-bill credit payments would be $1,360,000 to the positive.
Yeah, I don't see that figure. Yeah.
So, right, Mike is referring to the proposal submitted by CEC, and that is different than the table right there. And I think I've recreated it, but it's in the appendix. Would it be helpful to see the proposal itself?
Well, this, I, it wouldn't, no, we don't have to do that now. But this also shows a net loss of $19,000 in a worst case scenario. So.
That's actually the net present value.
Okay, I got that. So, well, I guess for Sunshare, I'm seeing cumulative savings in a moderate scenario of minus $10,000.
So, yeah, okay, so that's the report. The figures in the report are different than the figures in this presentation because Sunshare submitted an original proposal back in May or June. Those numbers in the report reflect the numbers in that original proposal. The numbers in this presentation reflect the numbers submitted by Sunshare in a new proposal that they submit this past Friday. So the report does not reflect those numbers yet because I think we received it Friday afternoon.
Mr. City Manager, has the city done any studies about what savings would accrue from, for example, something like changing the light bulbs in the city to LED light bulbs? Because it looks to me like we could save this much just by passive measures such as changing light bulbs.
Yeah, we've done several different studies. Joyce Manwaring's here can speak to some of those. But we, our most recent one, I believe, was at the Active Adults Center. And there were some recommendations for some improvements to the building, which I think have been made. The Recreation Center has also had that analysis, the newer building. I don't think there was many improvements. City Hall had that analysis done many years ago. But Joyce, do you have any comments on that?
Just that we have completed energy audits on all of our facilities and implemented what's usually referred to as the low hanging fruit, which is changing light bulbs. We did start, we are trying to implement additional savings. Like, an example of that would be a cover for the outdoor pool to save electricity. would be a cover for the outdoor pool to save electricity, or to save the energy you should, and I think that was mentioned, is trying to accomplish those types of things prior to investing in renewable energy. So we are, we do have a list and we are plugging away at it.
If I remember correctly, we, we spend on electricity for streetlights, we spend, am I right, $40,000?
A month.
A month, that's right. About $40,000 a month. I noticed that Arvada is going to LED lights and solar panels on the streetlights.
Yeah, that's our new model for any lights the city purchases and put in, puts in. Excel does not use that standard yet for their, for their light fixtures, I believe. Maybe Emily can speak to that, but, but anything that the city owns, the 44th and Wadis Project, recent work at 32nd and Youngfield, are all LED lights. Anything that's owned by Excel, they, they use their standards and we've been, Metro Area's been pushing them to provide more options, and they're, they haven't yet.
So Patrick, our goal tonight was just to provide the information to get us looking at it, and then we'll talk about it at another study session? Is that the goal for this evening?
Well, that, that's an option. I, I do understand this was a lot of information, and aren't you glad we had Emily present it, not me? Yes, I'm very glad. And, you know, there, there are some time constraints, I believe, on this that, you know, probably from both, both companies, SunShare and CEC, and they can speak to this if they'd like, but, you know, Emily's mentioned the, the solar array garden that has gone up in Jefferson County, and since we've been working with them, the amount of, of panels that we can purchase has decreased because other, other organizations are buying those. So at some point, we could, we could lose out unless another solar garden is, is built. So, so there, there is some, some timing issues around that. And SunShare is still working on, on their garden, so, but they may have some commitments already made to other organizations too. So there's some timing issues with that though, too. So tonight, again, it's, it's a lot of information. We, we could have a separate study session and bring both companies back if you'd like them to present and ask them additional questions, or we, we could look at maybe narrowing down some options tonight. You know, as Emily mentioned several times, we, we got a new proposal from SunShare at the last minute, so it kind of complicates things a little bit. Originally, we had pretty, two pretty distinct options. One was zero down, and one was, you know, $800,000 upfront payment or, or financing. One, one thing that I can tell you is I would not recommend, and I don't believe we have the funds to pay for this upfront ourselves, so we would have to finance. And there are additional costs, and as Emily mentioned, to financing Lakewood, they got a pretty good rate, I think 4.5% or 4% maybe on a 10-year loan. And, you know, but the closing costs are 20-some thousand, I think, is what they added on to that, so. So there are additional costs with financing. So I think it's, it's, it's between those two options, is financing or a zero-down option. And, you know, SunShare offers a zero-down or financing, a little bit different program, and, and CEC offers the, the financing option. So if, if you think we can, want to discuss that in more detail, we can tonight, or if this is just too informa, too much information, we can schedule a, another study session.
One last thing. The post in this Sunday's paper coincidentally had an article on both of these two companies and this program. And I recommend that anybody who's interested read it. This is in the business section, right? And two things that stand out in relation to this, to me, is that there was a little paragraph about Excel changing their billing model for, for this kind of thing. I, I don't know very much about this, but it looked like they are going to be less favorable than they are now. They've applied for the Utility Commission to make it less favorable.
So the cost components used to calculate the bill credit rates will change every year, so we know that, that will happen, and they're a reflection of cost. So the way it's calculated today, if they do decrease, then electricity rates should also decrease. So I'm not sure if you're talking about, if the methodology, if they're saying the methodology will change, or if just the cost components will change. Did they specify?
They talked about the, the methodology changing. This is all very complicated, and I'm just learning this.
It is very complicated, you're not.
But it's, it's something about the methodology that, that they use.
Okay, okay. So I've had just so many conversations with the PUC and Excel Energy and tons of people about the likelihood of the methodology changing. From what I understand, and are you all familiar with the PUC process? More or less? Okay, I'll just run through it really quick if you're not. So when Excel wants to change something, they have to petition the PUC and say, this is really in the best interest of the ratepayers, not us, the ratepayers. And then the PUC will say yes or no. And so what's supposed to happen is if the Excel's going to change anything, they need to prove to the PUC that it will be in everyone's best interest. And so, you know, you might hear discussions around the net metering discussion, how those, those incentives are changing? And that's, they're making the argument, it's in the best case of all the ratepayers, not just those with solar in their house. So there's lots of different angles Excel can take, but there is a public, a stakeholder process, and I know both of the stakeholder, or the solar garden companies would be involved. So, I mean, it is a concern. I've been told that Excel Energy changing the methodology is quite low, at least in the short term. The likelihood of them changing it could potentially be more likely, but it would be years from now. And that's because Excel Energy has released their Renewable Energy Standard Plan, they've said we want this many megawatts from solar gardens, they know their cost right now, they have a good sense of what's in the near horizon. 15 years from now, maybe not so much. So the, the conversations that I've had have led me to believe that that wouldn't happen right now. However, you just wrote that in the paper, and I haven't read that, so that might be new information.
So it sounds like you have several factors to think about, and this is my personal view, as well as some pressure about that, should we not engage in some sort of segment or some, I take some on this one, this energy segment, that we might, is this true with some solar as well, even though they have not established yet?
Sorry.
SunShare.
I guess I don't understand the question.
The capacity of, of their solar gardens, if there's going to be space for us to?
Oh, actually, so, so Patrick, when you were describing that, as I understand it, it might be the opposite. So when SunShare issued their two, reissued their two proposals on Friday, one of the reasons was they have City of Arvada, City of Westminster, and Green something Waters, Green Mountain Water signed up. So the capacity available to City of Wheat Ridge has decreased from 308 kilowatts to 208 kilowatts. I do not believe that is the same case with CEC. Is the capacity still available?
Regrettable in the past.
Okay, there you go.
Well, I mentioned it. Again, I think, you know, one, one point of decision that you could make tonight is, if we're comfortable moving forward with a financing option or not. And again, maybe you don't have enough information to make that decision, but, you know, financing, putting money down in these projects potentially could bring you more savings, but you do have to finance it. And zero down, obviously, we don't have to bring any money upfront or finance it, but the, the potential savings could be lower. Well, I, I guess at this, well, yeah, it would be lower, right, the zero down. Both, both plans, both companies are providing a similar program where we, where we would finance and, with similar savings, as, as Emily had presented. I think we, if we wanted to go that route to finance and potentially have larger savings, we, I think we'd maybe have to have more time to look at SunShare's most recent proposal that they provided to us, to dig down into that, to make sure that the assumptions are the same as the other.
That's kind of a big-picture policy level question, that, to the extent you could just weigh in on that individually, might really help staff figure out where to put their efforts in between. Yeah, the financing, no financing. You know, only, and then you have another study session, but that would make your next study session a little more focused, probably.
Patrick, is it beyond our capacity to think about designing and owning these facilities
Yes.
You don't want to. You really don't want to. Do it ourselves.
Have you noticed our roof has got a great spot for it?
I've got a flat roof at home, too.
Well, we have solar panels up there now, so.
Well, and that's, and I didn't mention that earlier. I mean, that's the benefit of these new programs, solar gardens. It's, you know, you don't have to have solar panels on, on your building, on your roof. Somebody else is taking care of that asset for you, and, but you can take advantage of potential savings. So that's, that's one huge benefit of this. So as Mr. Dahl mentioned, I think it is a, a larger policy discussion, is, is this, do you want to move forward with something like this to, to save more money, or do you want to move forward with a program like this to be a leader in the region and say that we're, we're, we're using alternative? Yeah, they both apply, and using alternative methods of, of energy consumption.
Mr. Urban.
I think it would be appropriate to suggest either some type of motion or consensus that the City of Wheat Ridge is, is actively interested in pursuing a solar garden agreement of some kind, and that we would like to look at two options, one from CEC and one from SunShare related to, the CEC option related to financing, and the zero-down option from SunShare, and do a study session comparing those two a little bit more in detail. I know that this, this presentation has been pretty good, but I guess that, what, what exactly would it be covering?
It's very thick for a first look, is what I'm trying to say. Yeah, Miss?
Go ahead.
Well, I, I know, just, I think we're thinking of an overall policy question, too, and, I mean, it does sound like there's a lot of moving targets, like what's Excel going to do, what's really the output going to do? You know, we have the moderate scenario, we have the worst-case scenario, which, some of these worst-case scenarios aren't very good.
I would say they're pretty unlikely, though, if that.
Pretty unlikely, that's good. That's pretty, pretty unlikely is good, but, yeah, still there. And then we have the moderate scenario and the best-case scenario, and, you know, I, I do support a program. I don't know if I support financing a program, though. I, I, and maybe someone will say, shame on me, Kristy, you just could have made, you could have saved 1.6 million versus 1 million. But they could also say, wow, you, you didn't lose, or the savings is not that different, and we didn't have to finance, and do all those other things. So it is something new. It is, it is, you know, Excel, who knows what Excel does? So a lot of those things worry me, so I, I feel more comfortable with the, I would give you the saying that my stockbroker gives me, but I won't say that. But I would feel more comfortable with a zero-down option, just because it's a new program, it's, it's kind of a new frontier type of situation.
So Mr. Urban, you would like to look further into both, and Ms. Davis, you have a direction in mind of the zero-down option? Any other commentary along those lines?
I think we should look at, we should direct staff to give us three options. One is the zero-down on the CEC option, and then the to SunShare, you know, compare all three of those.
Okay.
What additional information would you, I mean, we presented three options tonight. You just want another study session to talk about it in more detail?
I'm very skeptical that we can really save money with this. And I, there's, since Emily told us that all of these numbers are essentially wild guesses.
Not sure she said that.
Well, okay, there are unprovable at this point, let's put it that way. I'm skeptical that we'll actually end up saving any money here. And so I, I don't know. There's, there's so many figures here that it tends to obfuscate understanding more than clarify it, in my mind.
Now, I was hoping Mr. Pahn would have been here this evening, because he's, he's, through his professional work at the Denver Zoo, they're, they're looking at these options also, so he, he would, might be able to help answer some more questions, too, from his point of view.
So more reason to move it to another session. Mr. Starker.
My eyes are sort of glazed over. Quite frankly, it's a lot of, it's a lot of information, it's three proposals, it's, I mean, to me, you know, you got, there's a lot of variables to look at, and I would like to bring this back to a study session where we've had a chance to go back over the material again and, and digest it.
Yeah, Mr. Urban.
Just a technical question, or may not be technical, but related to the different models, in that CEC, we're, we're purchasing the hardware, whereas with SunShare, we're purchasing the energy generated. Is there any potential for the capacity of SunShare's systems to increase, which that's a benefit to us in any way? Or does that not change based on?
I, I believe that both solar garden providers design their systems to already provide maximum benefit to the city.
Designed at a maximum, did you say?
I'm saying, o, over time, so if you buy a system today, and it has a certain conversion rate, whatever it may be, and, but in SunShare's situation, we're more or less purchasing the energy from that, is that a better model because we're not necessarily buying the equipment that could become antiquated over time?
I don't think so. In both scenarios, the panels are going to degrade at a certain percent each year, and the manufacturer provides those parameters. I mean, I don't think so. Under CEC's model, there's, there's actually the potential to have more savings after 20 years, if the equipment lasts longer than the 20-year contract period.
I was just thinking, if you have a solar system that's 20 years old, 20 years from now, that would seem to be.
Those two work well together.
Yeah.
And those, that's factored in to the assumptions that the, the system would degrade over time and maybe not produce as much energy, it wasn't there. So the savings factors that, that, that lifetime expansion, or whatever you want to call it?
Right, yeah, they're factored into that, absolutely. And I don't know, so production could vary, I did mention that, but I don't think that's going to be a major concern. I think that over 20 years, those variations will sort themselves out, and the production that is predicted by either solar garden developer is essentially what you should see over 20 years.
So there are several questions, in, in, as well as the financing, and whether we would be better off without really putting any investment in it. There's also the length of time of the equipment. As, as Kristy put it, that there's a lot of floating targets, and I think that makes it a very difficult decision for us. Mr. Sun.
Emily, I had a question. I wrote down at one point, 4.8% escalation, is that, is that the annual escalation cost of energy?
That's what both solar garden developers are assuming, correct.
And, and does that, over the, over the past five, 10, 15, 20 years, have we had about a 4, 4% to 5% cost escalation?
So I work, I also work with a lot of municipalities on really large energy efficiency renewable energy projects with Excel Energy. Based on those projects, we have seen about a 3% to 3.5% increase in rates averaged over a long period of time. So I would say that escalation rate proposed is slightly high.
Okay, which would impact the amount of savings that you're going to save in your bill?
And that was your moderate scenario.
So under the moderate scenario, basically, I assumed utility escalation rates will be around 3%, 1%, and then go down just because, just to throw it in there of a different scenario.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if staff could work with Lotus Engineering a little more and kind of tighten these variables down, bring it to a study session for us again? Is that a possibility?
The variables are always going to be there, just, just so you know. Maybe we can tighten down some decision points for you, or, or the information. Would you, would you like the two companies to present to you also at a study session? Or is, would you like to bring Emily back to have a, a more detailed discussion and ask questions?
You would like Emily back for a more detailed discussion?
I think that would be beneficial. I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah. I appreciate her objectivity, and the way that she's presented this information's been fantastic, so, appreciate that.
You're on, Emily.
And I know it is a little complicated, because the report has one set of numbers for SunShare, and this has a different set. I realize it's hard, it's hard for me to understand, and so, that might be helpful to update those numbers.
Could we do that relatively soon?
We'll, I'll work with the mayor pro tem and see when we can get it scheduled. Our study sessions are.
Pretty full?
Pretty full, and we're doing double meetings here as it is, so, we'll get it on as soon as we can.
All right. Is that good? Consensus on that?
That's good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Okay, sure, thank you.
We'll be back. Let's move on to our last item for discussion, which is item number seven, proposed 2015 legislative program budget. And once again, I guess Heather is going to speak to us, or you are?
Well, Heather's here. Let me just introduce this. Heather and I can tag team this, but, you know, this is a little different this year. We normally don't bring this to you this early. We usually just bring a proposed budget to you during our budget meetings, council budget. But Councilmember DiTulio actually suggested this a couple of weeks ago, and I agree, this is something I wanted to do. I'd like to bring this, the council, the mayor and council's budget to you a few weeks ahead before we finalize the budget, so you can have some discussions about what's in your budget. You know, there's several things on the front page of the memo, there's some standard items in your budget, the salary for your assistant to the mayor and city council, the city council's stipends, I was going to say salaries, you probably don't see them as salaries, huh? Your stipends. The mayor and council also get, you each get $1,500 a year for, allocated for training. You know, we have $6,000 for strategic planning, $9,000 for our National League of Cities lobbying program, $35,000 to our general memberships for CML, Dr. Cog, National League of Cities and Transit Alliance. Our outside agency program, where we typically budget around $10,000, we have $11,500, $10,000 of that is distributed to local nonprofits who apply for funding on an annual basis. The Zope Circus, Carnation Festival, those are some of the general items that we have in the budget. But then, on an annual basis, you and staff may get different requests from different organizations for funding that we don't have budgeted. And that table on the backside, page two of the memo, kind of shows some of those organizations. I think we caught most of them from the last few years, that are new funding programs. And you've decided to fund some of them, or most of them, either one year or two years, and some of them are becoming more of an annual thing, but we always have to find the money, because we don't have it budgeted, so we have to come back and do a supplemental budget appropriation, or city council, the mayor uses your outreach dollars, which is fine, if that's the way you want to handle it. But I guess the question, and the direction we would like tonight, is are there any changes to some of the major funding items that are listed on the front page? More specifically, your outreach dollars and your education dollars that you each get, is that number still fine with you? And then, some of these items on the table on page two, do you just want to budget those in the budget and have them in the budget? Or leave them open, and if they request them again, you use your outreach dollars, or we do a supplemental budget appropriation if those requests come in? So, that's kind of all we're looking for tonight, some direction on that.
I have a few questions, if it's okay.
Sure.
Could you give me some background on the Zope Italian Circus? I'm not familiar with the background on that.
Sure. We, this was their third year, and Joyce can back me up, or I think Gina's in the audience, too. And actually, city council adopted or approved a contract for three years, so this guaranteed for three-year renewals, and this was the last year. So, you're going to have to make a decision if you're going to want to continue the circus. Gina has given us some numbers on how the circus did this year, but she is, we are going to schedule her to come back in a few weeks to do a fuller, broader presentation on the whole event, so you have an idea of how it went. So, the city council agreed during those three years to provide the funding of about $100,000 for the circus, and went to pay for the performances. But then the city, the agreement provides that the city gets the revenues off of the circus, but for the last three years, we've been subsidizing about $40,000, $40-ish thousand because the revenues did not cover the total cost of the program.
So, this amount of $105,000 is for 2015?
If you'd want to. That's, I think that was the amount that was in this year's budget for this year's circus. So, if you want to do it again, that's, I think that's probably the amount that we'd have to budget.
So, we're paying that amount for them to come minus the revenues that they made?
Correct. And we've been bringing in about $60,000 a year, so we've been subsidizing at about $40,000 a year.
Okay. And then on the Carnation Festival for $50,000, it says in 20, what was the total we did in 2014? Is it close to the 50, or?
We did a direct, yeah, I think it's the same amount. Again, these would be carried over to 2015 if you want to do the same amounts. So, we did a direct cash contribution of $22,500, and that was recently increased this year by $10,000. But then we also, we paid overtime for our staff to work at Police Department Public Works, that's about $25,000 a year. We pay for the barricades for the parade, so it totals about $50,500 with overtime and the money, and the direct cash contribution to the Carnation Festival Committee.
Okay. Okay.
So, I have just a couple of questions. I know, I mean, I think a lot of this is things we, you know, I've asked about it, I think, when you and I talk in our meetings, you know, how much of our outreach funds do we use, and those types of things, to see if it's dollars that we just have in there to have in there, or they're actually being used? And it sounds like it is going towards outreach, so that's good to have. And I will just say, in general, I look at the back, and I see that there's a lot of community need in the programs that are on the back that we haven't actually perhaps slated in the budget. So, I do think a lot of these projections and requests need to be honored and considered as a part of our budget. That being said, I don't know that I want to commit to the Zope Circus at this point until we do have our final review, because I also know, as a city council, the goal was for there to be very little funding by year three. So, I'd really like to see those final numbers before committing, especially when I look at that hundred, you know, $100,000, and I know, okay, let's pretend it's 40. But then I look at the total of some of the, I mean, Feed the Future Backpacks and Arvada Food Banks, and, you know, those kind of things, that there's definitely a community need for, that I want to make sure covered. It kind of goes back to, I know people hear me say this, but, you know, I've got to pay my bills before I go on vacation type of fund. So, I would, I know we had that larger bullet in there for the circus, but I don't want to put that in there until we do have our final numbers. And I think the other thing with that in mind is also, we need to consider the in-kind donations that also goes to that program, that it might not be a budget item, but it is a budget item somewhere with police overtime and those types of things. So, that's just my thought on, you know, the first page in the bigger budget, I think most of it I support. Zope Circus, Italian Circus, you know, I just need to see the final numbers, to see where we fall. And, you know, as far as the back, the programs, there's definitely a great community need for a lot of those.
Madam Mayor.
Other opinions? Mr. Urban?
Thank you. With respect to the nonprofits and the different organizations that have made requests of us, is there any sort of a standardized process or application for those organizations to make these budget requests? And I guess my concern is, is that we're not necessarily seeing the full picture of these organizations', you know, financial health, or their impact on the community, and to be able to get that in some sort of formalized way to make a valid decision on whether or not one organization truly needs this money more than another, I think that would help us. Do we currently do anything like that?
We do for the outside agency contributions. And you have, we usually are, typically have about $11,500 budgeted for that. $1,500 of that is to advertise and market the program so that nonprofits know to apply for the funds, and then we divvy up $10,000 among different agencies, and they must, there's an application they fill out, and they have to provide information, just like you said, how many residents, Wheat Ridge residents do they impact, and other financial information they must provide. Heather, if you have anything to add, please do. So, that's just that. But on the page two of your doc, of your page, those are individual requests that have come up over time, and they've come in individually, like the kite festival, you know, you had somebody come and present that, the senior circulator bus, you know, we've had many discussions on that. So, those are all individual requests and asks that kind of come up as needed, and you usually have a presentation.
All right. So, I see the need to sort of leave things open throughout the year as needs come up, and different organizations have different events that are coming up, and we don't want to necessarily stifle that interaction as it comes up. But I also want to be mindful of the fact that we're giving money to organizations, we don't necessarily understand exactly the true impact they have on Wheat Ridge citizens. We're looking more at the heartstrings or the emotional impact of helping out these organizations. But I'd like to make sure that as we're giving this, that it's in a proportion to the benefit derived from Wheat Ridge citizens on these organizations, because as much as we'd like to give to everybody, the bottom line is, we've got to be showing a direct benefit to Wheat Ridge residents. And then, the other thing is just making sure that each one of these has the proper credentials as a 501(c)(3) organization, and that we get some kind of report back from them as a requirement that says, this is how we used your money, and this is the recognition that you received, some way to show, a receipt of some kind that says we did good with that money. That would be my ask.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
So, the basic question tonight is whether to budget or not budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I would be in favor of budgeting this amount as an estimate, because I think we need to talk about some of these things you're talking about. For example, the Arvada Food Bank, now that they're serving Wheat Ridge as well, we probably ought to, you know, adjust that, or at least talk about it. And then there's one other here that we show an increase, and as I recall, when they made their presentation, they didn't prove their case. So, I think you ought to, I think we ought to just.
One by one?
We ought to budget this as an estimate, and then talk about the individual items.
Budget it. Would that work?
Each of those items in the table?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and the front, too.
Yeah, it'd be easier for us to pull things out of the budget and then try to put things into the budget.
Oh, I see what you're doing.
Yeah, then we'll bring this, we'll bring this back in October 6th, I think, is our budget study session. We'll have them in the budget, you can have a discussion at that time if you want, if you say no, let's pull it out, or, I mean, that's really what we're asking for tonight, if you want to.
Budget it.
All right, I agree. So, the final is?
I guess in that regard, if we're going to budget sort of the things on the table on page two, it would seem to me that we would, you know, the Farmers 5,000, the Arvada Food Bank, it would seem like we would not, maybe do less next year than we did this year.
That's up to you.
Well, you know, if you say it's easier to put it in the budget and take it out than it is to not have it in the budget and put it in.
Yeah.
You know, there's certainly some other things, I mean, you know, my colleague, Mr. DiTulio, has been a proponent of the circulator bus, and that's in, so, you know, we're going to need to talk about that. But I would think these other items, that we would not necessarily be less generous next year than we were this year, particularly on the smaller items, I think, as a percentage of the benefit that we give those smaller activities in the community, this becomes a greater benefit to them than some of the larger programs.
And, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
In each of these, the 2015 request, those are specific asks as coming from those organizations?
Yeah, we've received, asked some actual requests, and I think we've included some of those in the packet here. And if there's a to-be-determined in there, we haven't really received a specific request for the Wheat Ridge Farmers 5,000 yet, or the Arvada Food Bank, or Jefferson County Mental Health. General table sponsorships, that's something I've asked or encouraged you to put in your budget the last couple of years, because, again, those are things that come up, and somebody wants you to sponsor a table at an event, and so, we've put $3,000 in this year's budget, just to help cover some of those costs, and that's something we could do again.
So, I guess the Arvada Food Bank number at 2,500, that was previously related to a fundraiser that they were having.
That was, yeah, it's coming up in October, the Top Hats and.
And so, knowing that they're currently serving Wheat Ridge, I think there's two different types of distinctions with respect to this money. Some of them are related to specific events or fundraising items that they're working on. The other is just a actual recognition of the impact that that organization has on their community and helping fund that operation in some way. So, I would like to ask that we increase the Arvada Food Bank to $15,000.
$15,000?
And we do give, the Feed the Future Backpack Program, the $10,000 does go through the Arvada Food Bank, but it comes, it's specifically used for the backpack in our school.
But I think that we also.
They have other programs.
We also have a significant senior population.
Yeah, there's many other programs they provide.
Yeah. So, I'd like to add that on there as a.
So, part of the 2015 request, it would be the $15,000?
Mm-hmm. Unrelated to the Feed the Future.
Got it.
And I'd like to propose the Farmers 5,000, the 2,500 that we gave last year, wasn't that the main level of sponsorship?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that came out of the council budget, that didn't come out of the general fund budget.
Yeah, that came from each of us.
But I think that's the point, is.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, okay.
Have budgeted now, so we don't.
Okay.
So, it would no longer come out of our individual budgets?
And Jefferson County Mental Health, we typically, they have their annual event, too, and we've bought, we've purchased a table in the past. We didn't do it this year, I think we got the request, nobody, I think I sent it out, nobody responded. So, I don't, I think a table is probably around $2,000, so if that's something you want to do next year, we have, you can put it in, or you can wait till you get the request.
And Family Tree hasn't made any other asks of us?
Family Tree, that's for their annual event, too, that's for a table sponsorship of $650, and we've done that this year. We've funded that, I think some of you may have gone to that event.
I think we.
But they haven't asked it for specifically anymore, I don't know if they're on the nonprofit list.
So, you want? They are on the nonprofit list, and we typically fund them at about a $1,500 level, based on their direct impact to the community.
Thank you.
They've asked for $3,000, and, yeah, we're recommending $1,500, in addition to the table sponsorship.
Are you talking about Jeffco Mental Health? Is that what you're talking about?
That was Family Tree.
Okay. I think we should go ahead and budget the Jeffco Mental Health table.
Okay, just, we'll put $2,500 in there.
Yeah.
See if that's, I don't know what it's exactly going to be, but.
Yeah, just as an estimate.
You might as well do your table.
Okay. All right, so we'll do that, and then any changes on your allocations, individual allocations? Again, you each get $1,500 for education, $1,500 for community outreach, the mayor gets a little bit more for community outreach. You want to keep those levels the same for now?
I know we wind to later on.
Yeah.
I think it's a good start.
Good. All right, thank you, that's all we had. Heather, do you have anything else?
No, that's all, thank you.
Madam, motion to adjourn.
Well, we've got to go through the whole thing. We don't have to. Okay, wait a minute, the clerk has specifically said she had something she wanted to discuss.
Oh, yeah, the, I wanted to inform council and also the public that, if you recall, you will get a TAN booklet before the election that has pro and con statements on the Tabor issues, and so, I'm kind of putting out the invitation there for people to submit pro and con statements.
And, um, so I'm kind of putting out the invitation there for people to submit pro and con statements on our sales tax increase. Um, the deadline for that is Friday, September nineteenth. So if anybody, council members or anybody out there wants to, uh, submit some comments, um, they ultimately are summarized depending on what you get. But, um, and then those are sent in to the, to the folks that put the, um, the book out. So Friday, September nineteenth for pro and con statements on our Tabor issue, which is our sales tax increase. That's, uh, two A. That will be two A.
The contact again? How do you make these comments?
Oh, submit them to the city clerk's office.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I should have clarified that. I'm sorry. Yes, submit them to me and I will, um, see that they're taken care of.
Okay.
And, um, the ballot content has been, um, submitted and approved to the county. So we're set to go. The IGA's are done and we're, we're, we're rolling towards Election Day. That's all.
Genevieve, you had something specifically you wanted to say?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First of all, on the education committee, we have developed a guide to Wheat Ridge schools. We've identified seventeen schools. We've put them all together in a booklet for informational purposes. We should have them back from the printer this week and they'll be at the Ridge Fest this weekend. So if anyone is going to Ridge Fest, we'll have the Wheat Ridge Guide to Schools available if you'd like them then. Also, on September seventeenth, which is next Wednesday, at six thirty at the Recreation Center, we're having our Wheat Ridge Education Summit. We'll have all seventeen principals there. I hope they'll all make it, all seventeen principals to give descriptions of their schools and to also participate in a panel discussion about Wheat Ridge education. So that is open to the public. Anyone can attend. So if you're available next Wednesday, the seventeenth, uh, six thirty at the Rec Center. Second thing I'd like to bring up is regarding marijuana again. I would like to propose that we consider having Bob Doyle of Colorado SAM, which is Colorado Smart Approaches to Marijuana, come in and give about a thirty minute presentation on the effects of marijuana and what's going on in the industry. This would allow us to have an educational purpose to listen to the other side of the story. And I think it's something that considering what our neighbors have done, over seventy-five percent of Denver municipalities have banned marijuana. And considering what our citizens are saying, I think it's, uh, thoughtful of us to sit down and listen to the presentation about, uh, from Colorado SAM, Smart Approaches to Marijuana. So I'd like to propose that at a upcoming study session, possibly the twenty second.
Do we need a second person to agree with that? We need a consensus from council? It's being proposed that we have a, add to our study session about a thirty minute talk on marijuana from the organization, Bob Doyle. Do we have, uh, additional members that would like to have that? Seeing as we are, do we have a present, we're gonna have some big decisions to come up as far as, uh, what we have to do as we look down our ninety days, seventy days left now.
So Genevieve, could it be less than thirty minutes?
I believe the presentation that I've heard is about thirty minutes. He goes over the different types of marijuana out there, the vape pens, wax, um, what's happening in the industry. It's, it's a lot of health-related and statistical data regarding car accidents, uh, addiction rates, uh, IQ drop scores, things like that. It's, you know, he could probably shorten it, but I think twenty to thirty minutes is what we need to do a sufficient education on, on the topic.
I think we're already pretty busy. We have a lot on our topic and we hear from, we've already heard all those arguments many times before, uh, in our citizens' right to speak sections. And that ship has already sailed. We already have marijuana in the city and the state already has marijuana. That ship has, has left the port, so I, I don't want to spend thirty minutes doing that.
I think it's important that we have an expert in here as opposed to what our citizens are saying. We absolutely should listen to what our citizens are saying, but this is an expert in the topic to educate us.
Hey, other thoughts?
Were you planning to have both sides of the argument presented or is this to be just sort of a one-sided presentation?
This is, um, from Smart Approaches to Marijuana. If the other side would like to present their story also, I think we should listen to both sides.
I, I could go along with that, especially if we have both sides, because we do have, with as many people who have come and talked to us, they're really asking us to carefully consider the options that are available to us, whatever changes we need to make. And, and I think we ought to be able to make an informed decision with as much information as possible. So that's my input. Uh, we have, I guess.
Um, I, I should, um, remind you about the, the recently adopted council rules from April twentieth of this year. Do provide that the, um, each council member and the mayor shall be allowed to originate only two items per month to be added to the agenda of a regular meeting or a study session, subject to the scheduling authority of the mayor pro tem. So, um, it's not a consensus. It's, you know, you've got your two, two items per month.
It's not really consensus thing.
That's your bank account of items that you can, you can add, kind of unilaterally.
So we don't.
And, uh, subject to the scheduling authority, the mayor pro tem, understanding that if, it's, it's got to be found somewhere on the schedule and if schedule's full next week or to, the next two times, you find another time. And I, I assume council members sort of keep track of the number of agenda items or they initiate. Uh, it's kind of the honor system for that. I, I don't keep track and I don't think the staff does. But I'm telling you, you don't need a consensus. Pardon?
We'll keep prat for when we think we need to.
Mayor Mayor.
Yeah.
I think that it would be a, a scheduling priority to have this presentation now versus later, just simply because we are in this moratorium.
Exactly.
Um, I'm not interested in having this big, you know, pot debate. But I would like to get the information, uh, from SAM regarding the, the, the concerns that they have. Because I think that that's some of the information that we haven't received to this point. Um, and I think it is an educational opportunity, not just for us as council persons, but, uh, it is information that would then be disseminated via Channel Eight and others. So I think that's good information to put out there. It's not, uh, I don't think, I'm trying to figure out what the other side would be to that argument.
I don't, I don't know what it would be.
You know, I, I think, you know, what I'll try and do, I know we have a study session that's, that's focused on that. And Patrick and I have talked about it a bit, so we'll just try and make room for the study session. I mean, I would request if we could pare it down to twenty minutes, you know, that would be great. But I do think that there's probably some other facts that would be good to get from, like, the police chief and things like that. Because I do think sometimes we get general statements as far as, I know a comment was made about smoking in the pot shops. And it wasn't actually smoking in the pot shop that this was occurring. And, and some things like that, that, like, I think general pub, the public are making assumptions or, or pulling in one situation and putting that into a retail marijuana grow center when it wasn't even a retail marijuana grow center that we had the situation. And, you know, there's also the police activity and those types of things that people keep bringing up. So perhaps we could even get some information, at least what we have from the city, as far as occurrences and those types of things. Um, and just bring a bigger picture.
Okay.
And we, we do have, um, September twenty second scheduled for, um, the first study session on, uh, the moratorium discussion, so.
And I think the other thing about that, and Patrick and I talked about it and we'll have to think of a way to politically craft the statement is, um, we know we're probably going to get eighty-three or a hundred and eighty-three, uh, public, uh, you know, the folks here. And we have allowed, um, the statements at the study session. But I don't know that it's going to be a good value of our time to hear the same folks saying kind of the same thing, that they don't agree with it. They don't want it. They don't like it. Um, you know, if they all raise their hands and eighty-three of them say ditto or something. But I, I think that we've found that that takes up a lot of time and it doesn't allow us to have our expert witnesses and those types of things. So we'll have to find a way to be very craftful in our statements that we want, we hear you, we want to hear you. But let's hear some of the stuff we need to do homework on.
And I agree. And I believe also that when we look at this situation, I know there's a ninety day moratorium, but we are not confined to this ninety days. We can extend it. So if our schedule does not allow it, um, for having study sessions that, for example, you wanted to bring in the police chief and other things, if, if we need to, we could extend the moratorium and. Well, create a new moratorium, but that we don't have to cram everything in. I, I think we have the scheduling ability to, if we want to bring in both sides, if we want to bring in the police chief, if we want to do that. But I do believe we, we owe it to our citizens to take the time to very carefully study the, the topic.
And, and just to address that a little bit, the, if you, if you do choose to, um, put in a new moratorium on to give us more time, um, the ninety day runs out on November fifteenth. So you have to do a first and second reading. You, you could do the first reading on October twenty seventh. So you basically have until October twenty seventh to decide, do we need more time or not, um, to, to discuss it, um, to meet that ninety days.
Alright, so right now we are set on September twenty second. And at that point, you will, I'll have Mr. Doyle come. We have police chief. And if there is someone else who would, who would like to speak in, in, on the.
Is that an agreeable date or do you want to discuss your agenda before we decide on that?
We, we had September twenty second scheduled for a study session.
Okay, so September twenty second, okay.
Did I say the right date? The September twenty second, yep.
I will contact Mr. Doyle, but I don't know who else, if you want the police chief, and I don't know who else.
The, the police chief would, would be there. This, would, staff presentation would have been our, our legal team and, and community development and, and police. So we'll all be there to discuss this. Um, the September twenty seconds are a regular meeting, so right now it's a short meeting, um, and then we'd have a, a special study session after.
We, we could, as far as handling the number of people, which are welcome and it would, it would be fine. Uh, we could as, do it as they do it, Dr. Cog, whereas, uh, if this is, has already been said, that, you know, we only want new information and, um, to, to eliminate the, the repeated stuff or.
Sure, you, you can, you have that new rule where people can comment at the beginning of study session on items that are on the agenda. But, uh, it's well within your control to establish, uh, sort of refined rules around that for that one meeting, understanding that there's a lot of people and you have a lot of information from specialists that you need to get. And for example, you could say, we'll take public comment for twenty minutes. If there's twenty of you here, that's a minute apiece or however you want to divide it up, but we're going to stop at twenty minutes. And you say that at the beginning, so no one feels that, that, you know, they've, they've been treated unfairly. And people do the math right away when you say how much time there is. And then you have to stick with that and ring the curtain down. But if they know that ahead of time, they can decide, well, we're going to group together, we're just going to each, you know, and that's up to them. But something like a rule like that would allow you to hear the public and they have an expectation that you will hear them. But would also, uh, validate and support the main reason, honestly, that you're there, which is to get other information and do a fair amount of discussion. You don't want a two-hour public meeting because then you not have time to take the rest of this stuff. But you, you can do that and I'm happy to work with Mayor Pro Tem, the mayor, to put together those rules that they can be announced early on and made generally available.
Put it on the agenda even, so.
Yeah, put on the agenda ahead of time, people are reading it.
Several days ahead of time.
I think there's a genuine interest in information in our council here. Alright, anything else that we really need to talk about before we, um, cancel, uh, adjourn the meeting? Not cancel the meeting? We do have something from the city attorney?
I'm afraid that, although I have two things, and I usually don't have any, but look at it this way. That way I won't have anything.
You have two things.
That way I won't have anything on the twenty second. We have more time.
Alright, fine.
Uh, the first is information, uh, the municipal judge is appointed for, for a term of two years. That term expires in June of next year. And so you're saying, well, why are we talking about it now? The, the reason is that I had occasion to actually meet with the judge on some other things and we, we meet kind of irregularly. But, um, it has occurred to me that at, at appointment time, very often, a lot of council members just don't really know what the municipal court does and, and have a sense of what it does. But I will tell you, I visit municipal court as a part of my job. And sitting in municipal court even for half hour is hugely illuminating in terms of understanding what goes on in the court and what the judge does and what the judge's role is. And I'm not trying to argue, to suggest this for the judge's benefit or detriment. It's just so that you can really be a lot better informed, I think, for a very small expenditure of time. And I asked the judge, gee, if I were to encourage council to show up, which I always do, when though would be a good time for them to show up? And, uh, we went through the schedule and you said Mondays and Wednesdays, one o'clock to two o'clock is adult arraignments. And those are really good because you see the range of pretty serious cases. We think it's all traffic? It's not all traffic. There's all, there's assault, there's domestic violence, there's a lot of very heavy duty stuff. And you have the adult arraignments and a lot of little dispositions happen. And you, you're able to see the judge and the other parties, uh, sort of dispense a little bit of justice. You're not ending the case. They're arraignments, kind of first appearance. But you hear rights read, you, you understand people make decisions about pleading or going to trial. And you see a lot in a small amount of time. So I've got two recommendations. Mondays and Wednesdays, one o'clock, if you show up after lunch, slip in and just sit in the back. You don't have to make an appointment ahead of time, but I think it would really help you come appointment time. The other, uh, date is, um, Mondays, three thirty to four, uh, prisoners are, are, are brought in for various purposes. Uh, if, if they've got motions that need to be heard, et cetera. Very often in a civil court, I've been in district court many times where you're all ready for trial on a civil case and that gets set aside because they need to be, bring prisoners in because it's so very important that if you're incarcerated, y- your case is heard first because it's your liberty that's at issue. And that's a whole lot more important than anyone else's civil case. And, and to their credit, I've always seen judges and civil litigants understand that and understand that they've got to wait two hours because these people are in jail and it will make a difference for them. So you'd see Mondays, three thirty, four o'clock or so, it would be prisoner, uh, matters. Mondays and Wednesdays, one to two, adult arraignment. You call the municipal court ahead of time to make sure that it's on for that day. But if you can fit a half hour into your schedule, anytime if you now and next May, when you'll need to make the reappointment, I'd really urge you to do so. That's item one. Item two, as you know, the housing authority purchased the Fruitdale School. Housing Authority has a purchase contract with a charter school. It's going to get signed in the next few days. We've been negotiating it and have it in good order. One of the conditions of the purchase contract is a restrictive covenant, which says that the architectural features of the school have to be maintained. Uh, because all the, the architectural features, that is, that, uh, Temple Buell School has to be maintained in perpetuity. And also the name Fruitdale needs to be associated with that operation in one way or another. That's one aspect of the, of this restrictive covenant, which I wrote. And the other aspect, and the buyers have agreed to these terms. The other aspect is a set of performance dates by which they need to actually go in and, and do the rehabilitation and operate. Because they're getting the building for free. It's, this is a ten dollar transaction. Uh, and so it's important. And there's a reverter clause that I've written into this restrictive covenant that if they don't meet these performance dates, and they've got a couple of years, we add an extra time, th- then the property reverts to the housing authority because the whole reason it's being given to them is that they'll operate it as a school under the terms of this restrictive covenant. Um, the, the concern was raised that probably less for this two-year reverter and more for the perpetual, make sure it's Fruitdale, make sure the architectural elements are preserved. Question is if the housing authority, for whatever reason, would dissolve and not have a further reason to operate, then you need a successor entity to succeed to the reversion rights and to the, uh, in the short term and the enforcement rights on architectural elements, name of the school in the long term. Because that would go, you know, for as long as you can imagine. Um, and, uh, it was pointed out to me that, Jerry, you can, I, I'd said, well, that's easy. We'll just provide very clearly in the purchase agreement, there's a covenant that the succession interest, if the housing authority dissolves, is in fact the city of Wheat Ridge. And it was pointed out to me that, well, before you lay a, a real estate obligation in the form of a reverter clause or enforcement obligations on the city, you should ask the city council if that's alright with them. Um, and, uh, I'm sorry to bring it to you this late because this question just came up. I kind of assumed the housing authority would be around forever and. I kind of assumed the Housing Authority would be around forever and might well be, but I think it was probably fair to ask. Those are programs that come and go when you think about a housing authority. 10 years from now, it may not be a program, city wants to run instead relying exclusively on Jefferson County. And so it was a fair question to ask and if I'd thought of it sooner, I would have asked you sooner. My inclination was that you would not have objection to being the successor in interest for these two purposes. I don't need a motion, but I need to make sure there isn't an, if, if there's any kind of significant objection, we'll delay this thing and, and talk about it. Thoughts about that?
Sure, Mr. Urban.
Wouldn't, in the dissolution of the Housing Authority, there be a successor in interest defined in that process?
Potentially, or the Housing Authority might just get out of the, what I'm trying to do is make certain that, that there's, if the ball gets dropped, someone's catching it.
Sure.
I, I agree with you. Potentially, it could be Jefferson County Housing Authority might be the successor. If that's true, I'm not sure the city would be as comfortable with Jefferson County Housing Authority enforcing restrictive covenant or not being motivated to enforce a restrictive covenant 10 years from now to keep the building up because, I'm playing a imaginary videotape. You've got a building owner at that time that says, you know, we could do a whole lot better here if we just demolished the building and built a new one. The only thing standing on our way is this restrictive covenant. It's now devolved to the Jefferson County Housing Authority's kind of inherited the right to enforce it. We're gonna lean on them and they're not the city.
And I guess my other question related to that is, hold on, I lost the thought, sorry. It was something related to that.
Is there historical preservation at all at, at place? Is that what it was?
Well, yeah, that, that was part of my question is, is it within the legal authority of the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority to be enforcing covenants of that nature on a non-residential property? I mean, that's not necessarily in the mission of the Housing Authority to enforce that type of covenant.
Fair enough. And that, that question was raised, you know, when they, when they purchased it, they purchased it thinking it might be usable for housing. They determined it was not. And I've advised them that it's, once you have an asset, it's within your power to decide how to get, how to dispose of an asset. And they laid this restrictive covenant on. I look at it as an asset of theirs that while not really held for their main purpose, was purchased, honestly, in, in good faith, for that purpose. And I think that that means that whatever you've got to do with that asset as it slowly dissipates is still your job and is still your obligation. So I, I believe they have the right to, to enforce that covenant.
And I have no problem with the council being successor in interest. My only concern, speaking about the purchase of the property, is that the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority paid to the Jefferson County Schools somewhere in north of $112,000. Has there been any ask or may we make an ask either as a recommendation to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority to make that ask of Jeffco Schools to, to reimburse us that amount? I understand that the charter school doesn't have the, these monies available, but these are monies that the Housing Authority paid to Jeffco Schools and now this property's going back to be using for schools. There should at least be some kind of ask made to say, can we get that money back? Because the Housing Authority never gained any benefit from that transaction.
Well, to the extent that's unhooked, that request is unhooked from the, the sale transaction, absolutely.
Sure. And I, I don't, I understand that there's some issues with, I don't want to necessarily muddy up those issues, but I think it's important to at least make it known.
Sure. Absolutely fair to go back to Jeffco and say, you know, you sold this to us because you were not gonna use for school purposes and you're gonna demolish it. So we bought it. Now, actually, it's gonna be used for school purposes, for a school that you're gonna charter and you're gonna certificate. So let's talk about how we've contributed. I'm, I'm happy to work with Housing Authority to have that conversation.
And that would have to be an ask of the Housing Authority to do that. We don't necessarily have the ability to do that as a council, correct?
I, I don't see any reason you couldn't do that as a council. Sure.
Ms. Langworthy, a member of the Housing Authority?
Okay, as a member of the Housing Authority. What I would say is Jefferson County didn't come to the charter school asking for them to take the school over. The charter school that came in with the bid was looking to build a high school regardless. This is their options. I agree that you could go to the county and ask, but I seriously doubt that they're gonna give anything for this because for them, they were completely okay with tearing the building down to begin with. The Housing Authority did step in, several feasible, feasibility studies were done, determined that housing couldn't be put there. This charter school just managed to come in and save that building from being torn down. Because the reality is, is if, if we had not received someone with interests of maintaining the building, the building probably would have been torn down because we can't maintain it. We have any, we, we as a city and as a housing authority have no need for it. I don't know. I mean, we can bring, I'll bring it to the, I'm more than willing to bring it to the Housing Authority. I just don't know that that's where the Housing Authority feels is our best actions at this point. We, we really just want to move on with what our actual purpose is and we want to say that we've cleared the slate of this and we want to move on with what we really feel we're tasked to do. So I, I mean, I'll bring it up. I just don't really think that the school is gonna find that to be something that they would be interested in providing funding for because they, they never had any intention of using that building as a school. They were completely okay with tearing it down.
Okay, we go back to the original question of the succession question. Okay, Mr. Stafford?
Is the building listed on the National Register of Historic Places?
That I was asking.
Yes.
It is.
It is. Thank you. Yeah.
How, what, what does that, how does that affect the equation?
Oh, it, it helps you to obtain, among other things, grants from the State Historic Society. I actually sit on the State Historic Society's Grant Fund Review Committee. It's a pro bono thing I do. I've done it for a long time. Listing on the National Register while not required to get a grant and significantly helps grantees. So going down into the, into the future, whoever owns that building has the right to go to the Historic Society, ask for those, those grants. That's funded by lottery funds and there's a defined percentage that goes and it has to be spent every year. So that's of value to, to whoever owns it, to be able to make the difference between, on their, on their profit and loss sheet, between not being able to afford to maintain an older building as compared with a newer building that's cheaper and being able to afford an older building and putting money into, into certain things that, that are historic preservation that allows you to free up money to buy the new boiler that really isn't historic, but you, you, you had more money for the boiler because you got a grant to, to deal with the roof, which you could get from the Historic Society.
So the charter school could do that?
Yeah. And it also provides some, some protection for the building structure itself, does it not? We don't have, not on the federal level. There's not a demolition, kind of anti-demolition.
Yeah, does not exclude the building from being demolished if that's what we choose to do.
That was the question.
Right. I'm sorry to take so much of your time and I also apologize for bringing it to you late. It just came up late. It's kind of timely. And what I need to know is, is there objection to me listing the city as the potential successor in a sign in the event that Housing Authority dissolves? No objection? Thank you, appreciate it very much. That's all I have.
All right, can we close? Oh, Mr.?
Oh, just real quickly, town hall, or potential town hall, I heard from a couple of you who said you don't think we need it. The rest of you, consensus not to schedule it? Cut. That's all. Thank you.
I believe we can close the meeting. We're adjourned.